Testing.
Yeah, there we go.
It is now. It is now. All right. I call to order this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. Today is June 11th and the time is 6:01 due to technical difficulties. Thanks you for your patience and welcome to everyone. Happy summer. All right. In Vice President Lindsey's place, I would ask Ms. Sinowski, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Sinowski. We will have a roll call of the board members. Ms. Warner, could you start, please?
Karen Warner.
Amy Carney.
Julie Sinowski.
And Libby Hartwells. We have a quorum of board members and we will proceed with district business. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. I've had written request to, for two items to poll, item 6M as in Mary, personal action items by Ms. Warner from the consent agenda, and then to table item 8I by Ms. Carney, and that item is the approval of the proposed priorities for submission to ASBA. So that item would be tabled. Those are the amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the board agenda as amended?
I have a comment.
Ms. Sinowski?
Question on, you're asking to poll but not table personnel, is that correct?
Yes, that was the written request by Ms. Warner.
And is there a reason why we are asking to table 8I since that was an item we did not address last month in our monthly meeting?
Ms. Carney, would you like to speak to your written request, please?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hartwells. I actually asked for this item to be removed, not tabled. I asked the removal of the item, approval of proposed priorities for submission to ASBA for the 2025 political agenda from our agenda, as it was submitted on my behalf without my knowledge or consent. I asked Dr. Menzel in writing to not submit any agenda item in my name, and if he did, to let me know in advance, which he did not. So I also know that we don't need to vote on this item, so I would like to remove it from the agenda.
That was the request. I'm just gonna, for a matter of procedure, your written request to remove came in after the agenda had been published to the community, so it must be tabled now because it is on the agenda. We can't remove something after it's been posted to the community in that 24-hour window. So just so you know, as a matter of procedure, that's why I'm using the word "table" instead of "remove."
Thank you.
Ms. Sinowski?
My concern with tabling this is that we were supposed to address it last month because as an involved district with the Arizona School Board Association, we are expected to provide input to our professional organization to help them improve. And I believe the deadline for submission input is tomorrow. Can someone please verify that?
Actually, it was yesterday, but they gave us the ability to submit it after tonight's meeting.
So we won't be making a submission as a school district, is that correct?
That would be correct if, if approved as a tabled item.
My concern is that Board Member Carney, you volunteered for this position. It was on last month's agenda. You weren't prepared then, and it's okay to actually move forward with the agenda to the Arizona School Board Association as it's presented and not provide input, but just not responding to it, I feel like it is a dereliction of our duty.
I'm actually very prepared, and I had, had discussion with Dr. Menzel about this over email, so if you would like to take that item, I mean, I know you are an ASBA trainer. You are doing work for them, so if you'd like to take that item, you may, but I will not be taking that item tonight.
We do not have a motion yet on the agenda. Would you like to make a motion, Ms. Sinowski?
Point of clarification, it is not just anyone that can make these, we have representatives from each school board around the state. We also have alternates, and I would assume that if the person who was elected by the board, volunteered and then approved, could not resume their duties, that they would communicate that effectively so that someone else could do the work.
I would like to comment on that. I was never given any duties for that position. I was never told any, anything that comes with that position, so that, I was not aware that this is my duties.
Ms. Sinowski?
Thank you, Board President Dr. Hartwells. Respectfully, I do recall Ms. Wagner sent to us before the last meeting at least a week, maybe more, so over five weeks ago, the particular details that were requested from this action item at the last board meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna stop discussion at this point. We need to have a motion. I move to approve the amended agenda, which includes tabling item 8I and polling item 6M out of the consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Warner, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. That motion passes 3-0. We are moving on to the meeting decorum, which is not working out. All right. I'd like to remind those of you that are with us this evening about our meeting decorum policy. Citizens that are attending and/or participating in the Scottsdale Unified School District meetings, either in person, virtually, or telephonically, are required to observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to members of the governing board and staff, district staff. Unauthorized remarks or demonstrations from members of the audience, yells, outbursts, or other disruptions are not permitted. I would very much appreciate you of observing that meeting decorum. We do have children in attendance this evening, and I'd like to invite Dr. Menzel to please present the staff and student recognitions and celebrations for our evening.
Well, good evening, President Hartwells and members of the governing board, and thank you. The just completed 2324 school year was a banner year for Scottsdale Unified, and while we normally don't have celebrations in June because the school year is done and people have fled the summer heat in Scottsdale, we can't pass up the opportunity to present just a few more that are deserving of attention this evening. First up, it's round three of the 2024 National Merit Scholarships. Dr. Karen Benson is going to tell us about SUSD's most recent recipients. Dr. Benson?
Good evening, President Hartwells, governing board members, Dr. Menzel and Mrs. Wagner. For the past two months, we've been telling you about some of our outstanding seniors in this year's graduating class who are recipients of National Merit Scholarships. Last week, a third round of scholarships was announced by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, and we'd like you to meet two of our four recipients that could be with us this evening. Would Morgan Teft from Chaparral High School and Alex Stevenson from Suaro High School and their school administrators please join me at the podium as they're making their way up? Thank you. Thank you. We'll start bragging about them as they're making their way up. Morgan and Alex are winners of the college-sponsored merit scholarship winners. Nearly 160 colleges and universities underwrite roughly 3,800 scholarships each year. These awards provide between $500 and $2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study. Morgan, Alex, as well as Desert Mountains' David Ortloff and Suaro's Alyssa Perrine, who were unable to join us this evening, are part of a distinguished group of more than 6,800 high school seniors who will receive 2024 National Merit Scholarships for college undergraduate study worth nearly $26 million. Morgan is headed to the University of Tulsa to major in biology and minor in Spanish. She's been preparing for a career, career in medicine each of the past four summers by securing competitive positions with Mayo Cares, Abrazo Health, ASU Health Services, and this summer is volunteering at Mayo Hospital. Her SUSD diploma had two ADE seals, one for biliteracy and one for arts proficiency. At Chaparral, she was heavily involved in the theater program, having been a part of the troupe that took the school's production of "I Never Saw Another Butterfly" to the Edinburgh, Scotland Fringe Festival two summers ago. She was also responsible for the costuming for Chaparral's productions of Dracula and this spring of Mean Girls. So congratulations to Morgan, you've been very busy. Alex may look familiar to you. He has been here many times to be recognized during his amazing career at Suaro and in the Math and Science Academy. Alex is an amazing leader and innovator and has a passion for service and leadership. As president of Saber Cat Robotics, he's been in charge of student projects to create, build, and discover ways to help the community at large through innovative engineering projects. Go Baby Go, a program through NAU that adapts toy cars for special needs children, is among them. Alex has a head start on his future pursuits, having worked as a mechanical engineer intern at ASU's luminosity lab, working on NASA grant projects. He has also worked as a project leader in sustainable video game development to help educate others about climate change. This past school year, Alex was the youngest employee at Axon, and as an engineer contractor, advised a Scottsdale-based company on R&amp;D engineering projects, created prototypes, and worked with police and fire departments in the development of gear to protect first responders. Alex was accepted to Barrett, the Honors College at ASU, and plans to be an electrical engineer. Morgan and Alex, I'm humbled by your accomplishments already. Please accept these SUSD recognition coins from a school district that is so proud of you and your contributions to our community. We feel sure we will hear from you again.
Congratulations, Morgan and Alex. Very proud of you. We plan to do more justice to this next celebration at our August meeting. Last Thursday, we learned that two Scottsdale Unified School District schools were selected as Best of the Desert East Valley Award winners. The contest is sponsored by AZ Central, and we are most pleased to report that the Navajo Elementary School is chosen by voters as the best public school in the East Valley, and that Suaro High School was a finalist for the same award. We look forward to celebrating this with their schools and principals in the, when we come back in August. Athletic honors, Arizona Gatorade Players of the Year. You might recall at the last meeting, we were proud to host both the 5A State softball champions from Desert Mountain and the 4A State baseball champions from Suaro. Now accolades are coming in for their starting pitchers, who led their teams not only on the mound, but in the batter's box, too. Sophomore Lily Goodwin has been named the 2024 Arizona Gatorade Softball Player of the Year, and senior Cam Caminiti has been named the Baseball Player of the Year. Not only are Lily and Cam outstanding athletes, they are outstanding students and citizens, too. Scottsdale Unified School District is proud to be able to offer the opportunities to allow student athletes like Lily and Cam to succeed. We want to give them a round of applause. SUSD was responsible this past school year for the education of more than 21,000 students, and that includes support for those students who require particular assistance, such as learning English, those from low-income families who need extra academic support and career and technical education programs. That responsibility is measured by various units of the Arizona Department of Education, and our associate superintendent, Dr. Karen Benson, is here to tell us about SUSD's recent audit successes in these areas. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Yes, we have a handful of audits we'd like to highlight and celebrate this evening, and first, I'm gonna invite Dr. Praninski, Director of State and Federal Programs, to the podium with me to launch the first celebration of our English learner audit.
Good evening, members of the board, Board President Hartwells, Dr. Menzel, Mrs. Wagner, and SUSD community. Tonight, we are thrilled to celebrate two remarkable achievements for our Scottsdale community in the area of English language development. At this time, I would like to invite up our principals, Principal Rantala and Principal Perry, in addition to our ELD specialists and staff, state and federal team members, and also, we have a handful of students and their families in attendance, who we'd like to invite to the podium to be honored. These students recently passed the 2024 State Azella Test. Come on up. All right. This past spring, SUSD underwent a rigorous process monitoring cycle by the State Department of Education for ELD programming at all levels. Several areas were evaluated to include student data at the site and district level, synergy information, and SEI model implementation, to name a few. The audit was truly a team lift by numerous departments at schools across SUSD to showcase the excellence within our ELD programs. To quote our compliance officer at the end of our exit meeting, she said, quote, "It is not always the case that I get to say this to every school district, but SUSD is fully compliant at every level in all areas of your ELD program." We want to give a special thanks to the state and federal team. In addition to our SUSD teachers, who can join us tonight, this team is truly committed to the right work for every ELD child every day. We'd like to acknowledge the work of our ELD specialists who could join us, Jane Jeblin and Wendy Eisen from Ho-Hokam. Kaya Hart, who works at Pueblo and Echo Canyon, she also supports our students to dual-qualify as English language development and special education. Thank you, Kaya. And Nicole Moreno from Yabba Primary School. Also, we want to thank our state and federal team, Lori Kelly, Jamie White, Laura Henry, and Sean Crozier. At this time, Mr. Crozier will be giving out each of our teachers and staff in SUSD challenge coins to honor your work on the audit. Well done. Second, along with Principals Kelly Perry and Chuck Rantala, we are proud to celebrate a handful of students who could be a handful of students who could be with us here tonight who have excelled in terms of their English Language Proficiency learner assessment, known as the 2024 Azele Test. This past spring, SUSD had over 700 students test, with nearly half showing growth and proficiency on the test. Tonight, we want to celebrate a few of our students and their families as well who passed the Azele Test and were selected by their teachers based on their student data and perseverance. These students have shown their commitment to mastering the English Language Proficiency standards. Most importantly, we want to acknowledge their families for their partnership on their child's journey to becoming fully bilingual. Thank you to our parents. As I call your name, please step forward and be recognized. On behalf of Mr. Rantala, your principal, and your Ho-Hokum teachers, we'd like to recognize the following Falcons: Kindergartner Sesmar Arroyo Acosta, first graders Luis Melendez Duran, Evelyn Gonzalez, Liam Lopez, Fabiola Mendoza, Delsa Farmand, Isabella Perugis, and Sue Yeckna Nashadom, Ho-Hokum fifth grader. Well done, Ho-Hokum students. Also, we have a few Thunderbirds in the house tonight, joining us with Principal Perry and Yabapai teacher, Mrs. Moreno. Congratulations to Sarai and Ito Rosa Paredes, grades one and three at Yabapai Elementary Also, not sure if they're with us tonight, but Mr. Akbari from Desert Canyon Middle School sends his utmost respect and regards to two students who had very high proficiency, both on Azele and throughout the school year, in their ELD program. That's sixth grader Zonbe Hu and eighth grader Itamar Galanti. Well done. Lots to celebrate for ELD programming. We want to say thank you to our governing board for your continued support in our mission and vision in our ELD programs. Let us celebrate this and look forward to our future filled with continued success for our English Language Development programs in years to come. Thank you. Do we miss somebody? We got her. All my Yabapai kids. Let's go.
We have affectionately referred to this year as the Year of the Successful Audit, so we have a handful of others to celebrate. At this time, I'd like to invite Bailey and Krista to join me at the podium. Our CTE department also received exceptional feedback from our recent CTE audit, fully compliant in all areas and earning 21 quality points for indicators beyond compliance in all 35 programs. Kudos to our Director of College and Careers, Amy Downs, for her oversight of our CTE programs and this audit. So sorry, we had to fix a missed coin. Well, I'm going to start out with a shout out to our Amy. Kudos to our Director of College and Careers, Amy Downs, for her oversight of our CTE programs and this audit. While Amy couldn't be here this evening, she'd like to recognize two of her team members that are essential to the success of our CTE programs. Bailey Ricard and Krista Dimitrilius. With their assistance, CTE submitted over 300 pages of responses to program compliance questions, cataloged hundreds of images linked to program-specific inventory records, reviewed 175 pieces of evidence before final submissions, and providing more than 200 artifacts for curriculum samples and teacher certification. Pretty incredulous. Hats off to Amy, Bailey, and Krista for never missing a deadline and meeting the challenges and expectations of the audit with flying colors. We're not quite done just yet. Our Student Services Team has recently, most recently, led the successful completion of our foster care services audit. SUSD currently provides schooling for 61 students who are in foster care as part of our Title I Cycle 4 audit. The Arizona Department of Education conducts program monitoring of foster care services. Specifically in this audit, the ADE wanted to know about our transportation processes that ensure school continuity for students in foster care. This plan addresses the needs stipulated in federal statute under the 2015 revision of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Many stakeholder groups collaborated to frame SUSD's 2024 Foster Care Transportation Plan, including members of our Transportation Department, State and Federal Grants Department, SIMAR, Support Services, our Legal Department, and the Arizona Department of Child Safety. We are pleased to report that SUSD passed our monitoring cycle with a score of 94 out of 100 points. After additional collaboration with DCS, a few minor modifications will be made to our plan, which will be posted for public view on the Support Services website. Many thanks to the district departments that contributed to this successful audit as well, and I'd like to do a special shout out to our Shannon Cron and Matt Linds for their leadership in our Student Services Department. We'll be giving you both a challenge coin, too. I don't see Matt here, but Shannon, I'd like to have you come forward and receive one of our challenge coins. And finally, just wanted to do a shout out. We had Director Josh Friedman of our security team report out on the AZ Auditor General's Office Safety and Security Audit and the success and the original feedback that we received earlier, but we didn't want to exclude him as part of this celebration. And I'm going to invite him up just for a minute to help us move the podium just a smidge away from this row one, so you can all have a little more space. So thank you. I think that'll be much appreciated.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you, Dr. Benson. And congratulations to all of our department directors and the staff who participated in these various audits. They take a lot of time, but they reflect the hard work, diligence of the people on our team to ensure that we're compliant with state and federal requirements in service of the students here in Scottsdale Unified. So while our 180-day school year may have ended, the learning continues this summer in Scottsdale Unified. Between our online and in-person High School Summer Kids Club, K-5 Summer Boost Program, Middle School Summer Bridge Program, Gifted Camp, and 21st Century Music Camp, approximately 2,500 students are engaged in our summer programs. And for any parents who are looking for things that they can do to support their students during the summer, I invite you to go to susd.org. Right on the front page, there's a summer enrichment piece. If you've got a child moving from second to third grade, you can click on that and get all sorts of resources to support your student during the summer. These efforts are not the only thing that are happening. We also had our Teaching and Learning Professional Development Institute that took place during the two weeks after school let out and drew rave reviews from the more than 500 teachers who participated in the nearly 60 sessions that were offered. Some of the topics that were covered were using AI to support teaching and learning, early learning, MTSS Tier One strategies, CPR, building thinking classrooms, facilitating student-focused conversations to improve success, arts integration, curriculum mapping, deep dive, and Avid sessions for participating schools. I want to give a shout out to our teaching and learning team, especially Stacy Pasquell and all those who made those opportunities possible, the educators who dedicated the beginning of their summer to perfecting their classroom craft, and to the IT department for making sure that all of the tech worked. Congratulations all for your pursuit of world-class, future-focused learning for all SUSD students. And then to close out our celebrations this evening, it's my distinct honor to recognize one of our outstanding SUSD educators. I'd like to ask Mary Alvarez Jackson to come to the podium, along with your principal, Kelly Perry, and I would like to ask Margaret Serna to come to the podium as well. As you may recall, this spring, I was honored to be named the first recipient of the Education Research and Development Institute's Resilient Leader Award that recognizes K-12 leaders who demonstrate exceptional courage and effective leadership amidst diversity. As part of the award, I was granted the privilege of awarding a full-ride, master's-level scholarship at the American College of Education to an emerging SUSD leader. Tonight, I'm thrilled to introduce to you the inaugural winner of the ERDI Resilient Leader Scholarship, Mary Alvarez Jackson, a dedicated third-grade teacher at Yabapai Elementary School in the Coronado Learning Community. Mary's overcome many obstacles in her life, from losing family members to cancer and suicide, to incurring debt to pursue a college degree, to most recently, having survived breast cancer. Throughout her dedication to her profession, teaching, and the hard work it takes every day to excel at it, she truly embodies the spirit of resilience and leadership that not only our district values, but that brings her before us tonight as our Resilient Leader Scholarship winner. One of the things you may not know, and the reason why Ms. Serna is up here, is that Ms. Serna was Mary's kindergarten teacher. And Ms. Serna hired Mary at Tavon as a teacher. And today, we are just so proud of you, Mary, for overcoming so many life challenges and for serving as a true role model for the students in your classroom. And we know that with this, you'll provide extraordinary leadership for SUSD in the years to come. So can I confirm, you know that there's a commitment to stay at SUSD after you complete?
I do know.
So I'm going to leave here because I want to present you with the challenge coin.
So I've always been an anxious person, and Ms. Serna used to let me hold her keys when I was feeling extra anxious on a given day. Usually, it was her and her teaching partner, and so if the teaching partner was out, Ms. Ferrero, then I would have to go to her room because I couldn't handle the stress of substitute teachers. But I really just want to say thank you, and it was really hard to be vulnerable in my application. I definitely went out to my husband afterwards, opened the door, and was like, "I don't sound like a sob story, do I?" Vulnerability hangover is real, but I really do think that it's important to be vulnerable and share with people your experiences so that hopefully you can inspire someone who needs it in a given moment.
Thank you so much, Mary. You are true inspiration. And that concludes our celebrations for this evening.
Fantastic. Okay. All right, we are going to move to public comment. Oh, I thought that... Back to Dr. Menzel for superintendent comments.
So I have two additional items that I think are important to point out. One is that we hosted at Arcadia High School Avid Training, and I want to give a special shout. I see Dr. Danski's here and Jessica Winget, who is our leader for Avid. Last week, on June 6th and 7th, we had 541 educators from Arizona, California, and Illinois attending the two-day workshops, including 39 educators from SUSD. As the host site, Scottsdale was granted 13 registration vouchers, which allowed those 13 SUSD educators to attend the training free of charge and save the district $8,385 in registration fees. Our educators also included administrators from Echo Canyon, Ho-Hokum, Ingleside, and Arcadia. As you know, we're building out the Avid pathway in the Arcadia Learning Community. They attended the workshop specific to their role on using research-based, effective instructional strategies systemically to cultivate a rigorous learning environment and ensure all students are college and career-ready. Additionally, the previous week, on May 30th and 31st, 22 SUSD educators from our Avid elementary schools attended an Avid elementary implementation workshop, and those registration fees were also waived by Avid Center, since SUSD added three new Avid sites in the 2324 academic year, saving the district $14,190. So I just want to give a shout out to the team at Arcadia for being willing to host. Shout out to our facilities team because the campus looked great and everything that I heard was positive, but it was just a true joy to kind of see that two days' worth of learning taking place on the Arcadia campus. The final thing, as you know, we do not yet have a state budget, but this afternoon, I received a response to an email I sent to Senator Kavanaugh this weekend, and he did indicate that there's progress that's being made. You know, he chairs the Senate Appropriations Committee. And two pieces of hopeful news, and that is that they are close to an agreement, and in that agreement, there will be the aggregate expenditure limit being waived, which is really important, so we can spend the money that's appropriated. And secondly, the money that had been requested for the actuarial study around health insurance, that money is also in the proposal. So it still has to get across the finish line, but he was able to share that positive bit of news with me this afternoon, and I wanted to share it with all of you.
Good news indeed. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Menzel. All right, now we're moving to public comment. In compliance with the open meeting laws, the governing board may not discuss or take action tonight on any matters that are raised during public comment that are not already on the agenda this evening. However, the governing board members may respond to any direct criticism if they so choose, ask staff to review a matter, or that a matter be placed on a future agenda, which I just remind the board members pursuant to policy BEDBA must be subsequently submitted in writing. As a reminder, each of our speakers will have two minutes. The screen will indicate the time that you have. Please be prepared to close your comments and relinquish the floor at the conclusion of your time. The board asks that each speaker please introduce yourself by stating your name and whether you live in the district for clarity for our records. And I just want to apologize if for any reason I mispronounce your name. You may feel free to correct me at the podium. We thank you for your time and attendance here this evening and your cooperation in following the meeting decorum and protocols. All right, I'm going to read names in the order that you signed up, and then if I can remember, I will say who's up next, who's kind of on deck, so you can be prepared to advance to the podium when the first speaker is done. We are kicking off the evening with Krista Dimitrilius. I apologize.
Dimitrilius.
Dimitrilius, thank you. Here to speak about SSPA.
Good evening. I am Krista Dimitrilius, the CTE Programs of Study Coordinator for SUSD, and I am honored and thrilled to announce that I will be stepping into the role of President of the Scottsdale Support Professionals Association. It is with great enthusiasm that I embrace this opportunity to continue the incredible work that has been the cornerstone of our success. Together, we have achieved remarkable milestones, and I am committed to driving our mission forward with renewed energy and vision. As we look to the future, I am excited to collaborate with all of our classified staff, our administrative and certified associations, to innovate, grow, and make a lasting impact for SUSD. Thank you for your trust and support. Let's build on a strong foundation and reach new heights together. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Mike Bengert to address a topic of Dr. Menzel, and then on deck is Dr. Bob Seeger.
My name is Mike Bengert. I live in the district. One topic on tonight's agenda is the results of the 2324 KPIs. This is a performance review of Dr. Menzel. Normally, performance reviews are done before employment contracts are extended and raises given. Unfortunately, that is not the case with the current governing board. The three lame-duck members decided it was better to extend Dr. Menzel's contract and give him a raise before reviewing the results of his performance, and certainly before the public had an opportunity to voice their opinion. You would expect a district that purports to provide a world-class, future-focused education to have a superintendent focused on academics, but not SUSD. Look closely at what the goals were. They are minimal and certainly not stretch goals. Not only were the goals not met, but they have gotten worse. Note how they try to put lipstick on this pig by saying, "We do better than the other districts. I don't care about the other districts. I care about SUSD." And saying, "We may be performing poorly, but at least we are not as bad as everyone else," does not make poor academic performance acceptable. We are seeing the results of Dr. Menzel's emphasis on SEL, DEI, and gender identity at the expense of academics. Parents, you don't have to sit back and take it. This fall, you can voice your opinion about what is happening in SUSD. Get involved. Find out what has been going on, not just in academics, but across the board. Are you okay with 40% of third graders not being proficient in ELA? Are you okay with over 50% of eighth graders not being proficient in math? The list goes on. Ask yourself, why have over 1,500 students left the district and why there has been record turnover in principals and teachers over the past three years? If you're not happy with these results, come November, I urge you to vote for candidates who support change and will bring the focus back to academics in SUSD. Our students cannot afford to continue under the leadership of a failed superintendent backed by a governing board that will continue to rubber stamp his failed policies.
Next up is Dr. Bob Seeger, followed by Jeff Freté. Mr. Seeger is speaking to school board activity.
I'm Dr. Bob Seeger. I'm not an academic doctor. I do have a lot of academic degrees, but I'm a doctor of dental surgery. This is my 50th year living in Scottsdale, paying high taxes and supporting the school I moved here after finishing my education and serving in the United States Air Force. I represent literally hundreds of my followers here in Scottsdale, who are voters and taxpayers. We have a little different take on what you probably We have a little different take on what you probably are used to hearing, and that is, we believe that it was time for me to finally step up and speak on the record, considering it's near the end for three SUSD Board of Directors, and the next election is coming up to vote in new persons. It's interesting that there's been poor Scottsdale student public school performance and many student defections from public to private charter and homeschooling. You three, Zach isn't here, but you, Julie, and you, Libby, we call the Three Stooges, and we call you, Menzel, the clown. That's how we refer in our emails and in our personal talks. We're sick and tired of your behavior and your lack of common sense and the way you vote. And you, and you three board members, you vote in lockstep every time without any common sense. These two here are always on the other side. They have common sense. You fancy yourselves in bed with Radical Teachers Union, along with catering to the queers by fostering outrageous, diverse policies, including selection of library books for innocent youngsters that promote sexually explicit material and propaganda. There's only two sexes, male and female. And the ultimate stupid decision was to renew this jack.
Next up is Jeff Rattay to speak to a personal item, followed by Ms. Courtney Hol.
I'm in double digits, by the way, for appearances at the school board, which is more than one of the board members in front of me here. I'm going to read this because it's what I covered the last time and got no response. Two years ago, I was rehired as the seventh-grade flag football coach, and my brother would be the eighth-grade coach at Kokopaw Middle School. My position pays approximately $2,000, and the duties and responsibilities are spelled out in the governing board's personnel policies and procedures manual. During the first week of practice, the principal was notified by Dr. Menzel's office that I would be a volunteer coach and not be paid, as I was the previous six years. If I walked the entire season for these 32 families would be canceled. I spent the next 10 weeks coaching them for free to save the season. During many of the practices and games, a teacher and close friend of a board member hung around the team. This lady never coached a single day. Toward the end of the season, I found out that she was paid my coaching stipend. I was told by your lawyer recently that the audit books list her as the seventh-grade flag football coach at Kokopaw. It's a lie and the theft of public funds. After the last board meeting, I wrote a letter to your finance director and received no response. It seems likely that someone in your finance office was involved in this swindle. Dr. Menzel and each of the board members signed off on this scam. If the families of those kids found out about this, they would be furious. Your lawyer keeps reminding me that the statute of limitations as to a public entity is past the one-year mark. I want to mention something else. For the past 18 years, I've been doing veteran presentations in schools all over Arizona. I have over 20,000 thank-you letters. This past year, I did 47 in Arizona and only one in Scottsdale schools, and if you're wondering why, talk to that superintendent right there.
Next up is Ms. Courtney Hol regarding dress code and deceptive, allegedly deceptive practices, followed by Jill Dunneken is next.
Good evening. I have been associated with this district for 25 years as a graduate, Charo's award-winning teacher, and now a parent of four students here. As my children get older, I don't get on campus as much as I used to. After chaperoning a middle-school field trip, I was shocked to see what students were wearing. I later discovered the dress code was changed to permit students to wear clothing more akin to a day at the beach. However, you and the public need to know this change was made deceptively. Board members, please listen and verify for yourself what I'm about to tell you. Mrs. Kron presented dress code changes to the board in June of 2022. At the two-hour mark, please, look it up. Her slides specifically say, "Students must wear clothing that covers private body parts, including navels." However, the next time the Code of Conduct came before you to be voted on October 18th, the Code of Conduct uploaded to board docs had been changed to now allow exposed navels without any notice to the public or an open meeting discussion. Look on board docs and check out the YouTube videos for the proof. The only way parents would have known about this is if they combed through 75 pages, assuming the district made changes they had not disclosed. How is this acceptable or transparent? I reached out to Mrs. Kron, and after seven weeks, I was finally informed that multiple stakeholders were engaged when making the change, including parents. But parents are not invited to sit on the committee, and there was no survey sent out. How exactly were parents engaged in this process? I was told that the committee aligned dress code policies with neighboring districts. None of our neighboring districts allow clothing as explicit as SUSD, not PV, Mesa, Cave Creek, Deer Valley, or Chandler. What districts were reviewed? After five weeks, I'm still waiting for a response. When information is hidden from the public, it erodes community...
Thank you. Ms. Jill Dunneken has not identified which topic she will be addressing, followed by Nushin Taheri Chatrudi.
Last year, 39% of all Arizona Board of Education disciplinary cases were against teachers who displayed sexual interest in children. Yet, the Code of Conduct Committee updated the dress code without public input or any notice to parents to allow young girls to attend school in shirts that expose their midriffs. Mrs. Kron, who leads the Code of Conduct Committee, has claimed that the dress code change was made to align with neighboring districts. However, a review of Deer Valley, Chandler, Mesa, and Paradise Valley revealed that each of these districts specifically require students to cover their navels. The district claims they engaged multiple stakeholder groups for input on this change. However, parents do not recall any communication on this topic. Mrs. Kron and Superintendent Menzel have both indicated that students were a driving factor in the change and that half-shirts are being allowed in the name of gender equity. This edgy babble statement is confusing, given that the dress code does not differentiate rules for boys versus girls. Mrs. Kron has lamented that it is hard to enforce a dress code. Her excuse is that some girls are tall, some are heavy, making it unfair to expect all girls to have shirts that reach their waist. What if we apply the same equity logic to a half-shirt? Some girls are large-chested, some are small. Per SUSD standards, is it equitable to require that a half-shirt cover a large-chested girl's breasts? I feel confident that the adults in charge today all survive their school years in full-length shirts with no detrimental impact, and I'm sure our kids can do the same. To regain public trust, I request that the board roll back the dress code changes and require students to cover their navels. As students leave SUSD and enter the workforce, how they dress will have an impact on how they're perceived. Let's instill good habits today so they are poised for success tomorrow. Thank you.
And our last speaker, Nushin Taheri Chatrudi, regarding the topic of board meeting. Okay, it looks like that person has no longer, is no longer with us this evening. All right, we are going to move to the, actually, would any board members like to respond? Ms. Sinowski.
Thank you, Board President, Dr. Hartwells. I would like to make a correction on some misrepresentation of facts that were shared by Mr. Rattay, stating that we had swindled him and this was a conspiracy. This has been dealt with by the board. Another thing I would like is for there to be verification as to the parental input that actually took place during the dress code revision process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sinowski. Does anyone else have any other comments? Ms. Kearney.
Couple things. I would like to address the dress code revision process and make sure that the board has all communications that happened during that time, considering two of us were not on the board during that, so that we can understand, and if we need to readdress that. Also, I just had a question. I heard you, Dr. Hartwells, speak to Mr. or Ms. Mrs. Holley, saying, did you add the word "allegedly" in there, or did she write that?
I did.
Okay, I don't think we, that's appropriate, that we should be adding words to...
Well, it is an allegation, right? I'm reading the topic, and some people didn't bother filling it out. Thank you. I also would like to correct the record. Ms. Kearney stated she doesn't have all the materials, and I'd like to thank Ms. Kron. I believe those were all sent to the board from the last couple of years in which the dress code documents were, that were exchanged with the board at that time, were shared with this board, so you do have them.
Okay, so every, we have every document, every email, every communication.
Well, I mean, if you want... Ms. Kearney. You're not entitled to people's personal communications. Is that what you're asking for? You have the board documents that were shared with the board at the time. Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay, I'm asking for everything done with the committee.
You can do that with a public record request in writing. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I would like to apologize to the community for having to listen to Dr. Seeger's very rude comments. There were children in the room. It was inappropriate, and it did breach the meeting decorum. All right, we are moving on. The consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Warner seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes 4-0. Ms. Warner, we're going to address the personnel item that you asked to be pulled, which was, again, for the community by way of reminder 6M, as in Mary.
Agenda item 6M is the new hires of three individuals, and I'm going to pull one of those individuals to vote on it separately. And I just have a brief statement, and then we can...
Go ahead and make your statement, but then you'll need to make a motion, because what was pulled was everything, so this impacts currently everybody, so feel free to make your statement now.
Give me one second. Let me just pull it up, and I can do it. I'm going to do it twice.
Are you prepared to make your statement?
I am, I am. Just, I want to make sure I have... So I'm going to make a motion to approve Ms. Hardy and Ms. Flytek. I have a comment on one of them. I've been in communication with Mr. Menzel, so we can approve those, and then I can make my comment. This will pass tonight, but I have a comment regarding a hire. And we can pull one individual and vote on it separately. We have done it in the past.
The personnel action item includes more than two hires. So what you're saying is you don't want to pass anything, just two hires, out of this entire document?
No.
So we're called, you pulled the whole item.
Okay, so I'm going to approve everything except one, and I understand I'm in a minority on that, and it will pass, but I do have a comment on one. So I can make a motion to approve all of them, with the exception of Associate, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent of HR. So I make a motion to approve the entire personal action item, with the exception of the position of the Assistant Superintendent of HR.
Is there a second?
I'd like to amend that motion, because since that item was pulled, I wanted to talk about one other item on there. How would we do that?
Let's do the discussion first, and then we'll move to motions, because it seems like, uh-oh. Right now, there's a motion on the table with no second.
Okay.
Ms. Warner, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make before we move to Ms. Kearney's comments?
So for clarification, so everybody understands which direction this is going, and this is nothing personal. I am sure this candidate is lovely. However, and I know that this will pass tonight, but I do have concerns, having watched a decline in incredibly poor decision-making and treatment of our school staff this past year by our HR department and the person in charge. I've also learned that having high school principal experience or high school administrative experience is absolutely imperative when you are running a HR department of this size. This candidate has no high school administrative experience, as confirmed by Mr. Menzel, so I will not be voting for her this evening.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify what the motion includes and doesn't include, because coupled with your comments, it hasn't been seconded. So just can you clarify, please, for the record, exactly what your motion to approve is directed to, please?
So is yours, is the, which one is yours? Okay, so I'll just make a motion to approve the personal action items less, with the exception of the Assistant Superintendent of HR and Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Does that cover it?
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Warner. Ms. Kearney, you said you had comments you would like to share.
I just had a question for Dr. Menzel. I had requested the job description for the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, and I've not seen that, so I'm just wondering if Dr. Menzel could explain why you made this change from our current organizational chart's Associate Superintendent position to Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. If you could just tell us why you made that shift, so we can understand.
So I did send that in an email to the governing board, but I made the decision with respect to the organizational chart to reinstate the Assistant Sup of Educational Services instead of posting for an Associate Superintendent in order to address the needs that we have in the district and not increase administrative costs.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. So there is a motion on the table that does not have a second, therefore, it fails.
I wasn't able to give a second to that. I was giving my comments.
Are you going to give a second, Ms. Kearney?
I am giving a second to that, yes, thank you.
All right, then, all those in favor of the amend, of the proposal, the motion that is on the table and seconded by Ms. Kearney, vote aye. Those in favor?
Aye. So we are at 4-4 tonight. I think we want to be aware of that.
Well, we need to go through with the vote, Ms. Warner. So all those in favor of the motion on the table that Ms. Kearney seconded...
Could we repeat the motion?
I will repeat it. So the motion is to approve the entire 6M personal action item, with the exception of the Assistant Superintendent of HR and the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. That is what's on, and then we would vote on them separately. We've done this many times.
Is that what you seconded? I'm not questioning whether we've done it or not. I'm just getting this, trying to move us forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Kearney, do you understand what you seconded? Is that what you intended to second?
Thank you for that. I would like to vote on those two positions separately, so if we, that's what I assumed we were doing.
Does that mean you are seconding the motion that Ms. Kearney just articulated for a second time?
To vote separately on them. I'm not voting right now.
We need to confirm there is a second, or there will be no vote, and it will fail. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of Ms. Kearney's motion to approve the personnel action items with the exclusion of the hires for the two assistant leadership positions, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm a nay. That action fails, 2 to 2. I move to approve the personnel action item 6M as proposed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Ms. Sinowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
That motion passes 3-1. Dr. Menzel, would you like to congratulate and welcome our new hires?
So tonight, we have two of the new hires in the room. Heather Carter, Heather Cruz, our new Assistant Superintendent. Welcome. We're looking forward to having you join the team, and Melinda Splitick, the new principal of Cornano High School. Amy Hardy was here this evening, but had to leave with her daughter, so we also want to congratulate her as the new Mountainside Middle School principal. The fourth-person Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services is in the process of packing up and moving from Florida to Arizona and should be in town next week, I believe.
All right, thank you, and welcome. We're going to move now to our information discussion items, and first up is the discussion with respect to governing board policy BBAA regarding board member authority and responsibilities, and policy BCA regarding board member ethics. This was a request by Ms. Warner for a clarification of the scope of these policies, and I believe Mr. Bozen will be making very brief remarks.
Thank you, President Hartwells, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Menzel and Ms. Wagner. Yes, Board Member Warner requested a review and interpretation of these two policies, BBAA and BCA. For those in the audience, the B policies are the Governing Board policies that provide guidance to the board for how to conduct the meeting. Arizona statute permits governing boards across Arizona to really create their rules of order, and these policies are that. Board Member Warner, your questions had to do with an interpretation of those two policies, so I would leave it to you to give us any more guidance on what you'd like. I'm happy to talk about them at length. Policy's kind of a hobby of mine. But do you have any specific questions you'd like to address?
So I don't think you have to speak to it at length. I would just like the administration's interpretation of the policy. And I'm sure you've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Menzel about that. And so if you could provide the public with what that means.
Okay, sure thing. And we did have an opportunity to meet. We regularly discuss Governing Board policies. I'm having trouble finding it on here. For the public's benefit, if I can pull it up. There we go. So BBAA, Board Member Authority and Responsibilities, outlines the specific duties and responsibilities of individual board members. One interesting component about Arizona school law is that individual board members don't have many individual duties and authorities outside of what we have here in policy and statute. Statute gives to governing boards themselves, as a member, a five or a three-member body, board, the authority to conduct business for elected officials or appointed officials. But individual board members themselves, there are very few specifics in law. In your policy, on the other hand, one way we keep this work together is by outlining really good governance components. And you could see here in BBAA, it outlines the duties and obligations of an individual board member. You know, I don't think it's that helpful for me to go through and read these, but ultimately, it's about proper governance and providing the employees and the administration the empowerment to conduct the jobs, the important jobs that the administration has been given. So I think Dr. Menzel may want to add to that.
I would just say the point of the policy is to make it clear that individuals don't direct the work of any of our staff members. The Governing Board, as a body, establishes policy and can provide directives to staff when it's been on an agenda, conducted in an open public meeting. And so if an individual board member were, and I'm giving a hypothetical, to notice that the grass was getting long out in the courtyard and were to instruct someone to mow that tomorrow, that would be a violation of BBAA. Generally, we don't have a problem with grass getting long, but there, that's the kind of thing that is anticipated here. And it's protection for staff because governing board members who are elected by the public do have a certain power seated as a board. And that can get conflated sometimes as individuals. And so the policy makes it clear, when the board's sitting at this table in an open meeting, they can direct the work of staff through policy or through a specific motion that's supported by a majority of the people who are here. But individually, if they're out and about in the community, they don't have the authority to direct the work of any individual staff member.
Yeah, I agree. And really, the BBAA speaks to that, speaks to the specific duties. The other policy's BCA, which is the ethics policy, board ethics. And then BCC is a specific policy to SUSD, which outlines Board Member Requests for Information, are also, in that same manner, outlining what individual board members, what the responsibilities really that you as a board have agreed to. And sometime, and it's always a learning curve for boards, and sometimes it's easy to just want to get something done, like having the grass mode. It's a good example. Best way to do it, though, is in BCC, is to copy the superintendent and ask him to follow up with the request.
Thank you, Mr. Bozen. Ms. Warner, did you have any follow-up questions? Do you need a minute?
There we go. Okay, so I think that Mr. Menzel laid it out. We act as a board. The only way that action can be taken is by a board vote in a public meeting. So actions taken that were by an individual board member without a vote could be invalid. Thank you.
All right, I'll just add, I thank you for your comments. BCA was listed as part of the discussion. Didn't get into that too much, but that is the relevant policy for undue influence, prohibition of undue influence by any individual member, which is another control, right, to ensure that the board functions as a whole and not as five individual members with any individual authorities.
Agreed.
It seems relevant.
Yes, absolutely, Dr. Hartwells.
Thank you, Mr. Bozen. Now, absent any other comments or questions, we will move on. Thank you. And you can stay there, yes. 7B, First Read, Governing Board Policy DIE regarding audits and financial monitoring. I believe we have an amendment proposal here.
Yes, this is a first read. Your background sheet, which I prepared, has three edits. I'd like to show the black line. It looks like we don't, oh yeah, there we go. This first one was a change to eliminating BDF. It's a policy that was eliminated a couple of years ago. And the correct citation would be to BDE. Second change is a statutory change, which a few years ago, this is a good reason to have an outside policy service because we get updates from our policy service provider demonstrating what the statutes have changed and how to amend policy. This really should have been amended a few years ago, so it's kind of a cleanup. Statute requires the Governing Board to publicly accept all audits or compliance questionnaires by roll call vote. And then, to your point, President Hartwells, about undue influence, there is a request to prohibit governing board members from serving on the audit committee. And I do think that request would be consistent with the board ethics policy that you referred to. So those are the three changes. I think now's the time for discussion. And we would move to action at a second meeting, which is also a Governing Board policy that there are two reads for most policy amendments, giving the public an opportunity to comment after the first read.
Thank you, Mr. Bozen, including board members. Any comments? Ms. Carney?
Thank you, President Hartwells. I would just like to state that Policy BDE states that no more than two board members may serve on any one committee. So how is it possible that in this policy, we can add a line saying, "No governing board member shall serve on the audit committee" when BDE states that a board member could?
Well, that would potentially be an inconsistency. So I think I would need to go back and read those together and make sure, and make, give you, after looking at that, give you some legal advice on that.
Recall, there was a proposal before this board to amend Policy BDE to remove that language about a governing board member serving on any committee. And the advice we were given is that because the audit committee is not a superintendent committee and that BDE refers to superintendent committees, that there wasn't an inconsistency. Now, the curriculum committees, by statute, prohibit governing board members from sitting on the curriculum committee, presumably because that's healthy governance and it would also have a board member sitting on an advisory committee to advise itself, which of course is not very democratic. So I believe it would be consistent with how the state law is reflected in curriculum committees, to have the audit committee also not have a governing board member sit on it. And it's true that we had them on there before when this audit committee was first started. So it's still in its kind of nascent stages, right? It's only been around for, what, three or four years now, and it's fourth year. So still learning how to sculpt this in the appropriate, healthy governance fashion, perhaps.
Well, since it sounds like you want me to opine now, my understanding.
You don't have to. This is a first read. I'm just commenting because that was relevant and it has been brought up before with BDE. And this board chose to.
Right, BDE permits board members to remain on committees.
Allow for potential undue influence, yes, on superintendent committees.
Yeah, I think my answer, Ms. Carney, would be that if this was included in DIE, audit committees, that this would overrule the BDE statement about two board members, no more than two board members could be on a committee. So this would overrule that for this specific committee. But other committees, other board committees could have up to two board members.
This also would bring it in alignment with the Audit Committee's charter, which does not recite or contemplate having governing board. It's silent.
It is silent to it.
There is no requirement to have governing board members on the audit committee.
That's correct.
So this would be in alignment with that. And this policy is only directed to the audit committee, not any other committees. Correct?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen, if you could just put it all in writing after this meeting so that we can understand? Because the amendment to Policy BDE did fail. And it does say that no more than two board members may serve on any one committee. Board members have been serving on that committee. So we just need to ensure that the policies are in alignment and we can take the time to do that.
Yes, that is the attempt tonight. So thank you for that comment. I'm sure Mr. Bozen will do so. Ms. Sinowski, you have some.
Thank you, Board President, Dr. Hartwells. Mr. Bozen, can you also cross-reference the at least 10 state statutes that this policy is influenced by? And I believe there are some other statutes and cross-referenced budget format and other things. If you could just kind of consider those when we, before you bring the next second read to us.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will do that.
I just have one more thing about that, too, as well. We have.
Ms. Carney, you are recognized to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells. We do have a board member currently sitting on that committee. So if you were to add that language and change this policy, when would that take effect?
Oh, I think I would have to take a look at the charter. I think the Governing Board making that movement would probably, most likely, act to eliminate that board member's service from that committee because board policy overrules the charters of the board committees. But there could be something inconsistent in the charter. I don't think there is. I think it would be immediately.
Okay, yeah, I don't agree with adding that language. So if you could just please do diligence and get back to us, that would be very appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Bozen. I'll just finally, I'd like to end with one comment, that the intent of advisory committees to the board is to advise the board, not for the board to advise itself. Thank you. We will move on to Item 7C, First Read, Governing Board Policy IGA regarding Curriculum Development.
I think this is an old version. The background sheet indicates that there was a suggestion to add this first underlying language. Now, IGA, Curriculum Development, is the board's policy authorizing the superintendent actually to create curriculum committees and an outline of what needs to be in the curriculum development process. This addition, "Recommendations for New Curriculum Adoptions Shall Ensure Alignment With Arizona State Standards," is added to be compliant with the state statute, which requires governing boards to adopt curriculum that aligns with the state standards adopted by the State Board of Education. So the statutes for that are, I think it's 15701 point, it's down here, actually, 701 We had a discussion about this at Cabinet this morning and noted that there are some elective courses that don't have state standards that oversee them. And so one thought that I had on this was to add, "When applicable, after state standards." Or, and actually, I think I had a better thought after that, that it would say, "With Arizona state standards or other law." Because there is other law that applies to curriculum as opposed to just the state standards from the State Board of Ed.
Could it be other applicable law?
That would be even, yes, something like that. The bottom request for no governing board member will be a member of a Curriculum Development Committee. I think this is the wrong copy on here because we actually eliminated this. The curriculum committees are superintendent-created committees, which board members don't serve on and are not part of Policy BDE. And I think the policy for curriculum committees actually prohibits governing board members from sitting on curriculum committees, or superintendent committees, excuse me. That's Policy CE.
So it's superfluous?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or thoughts before I move on to the next policy? With Dr. Hartwells.
Looks like Ms. Carney has a comment or question.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwell. So you're saying this is the incorrect version of this policy because the policy we have, right, does not include that last line. You removed the "No governing board member will be a member of Curriculum Development Committee."
Yes, this is a proposed edit. And after some discussion and looking at Policy CE, realized it was superfluous, eliminated that. Not sure why it's in this folder.
Yeah, it's correct in Board Docs. It's just not correct on the computer that he pulled it up from.
Okay.
Okay, and what is the impetus of adding this line to the policy?
I think perhaps Dr. Menzel can speak to that, but I will say that it applies, there is a state statute on it. And that's why I believe that it's consistent with state statute and is a good reminder for all curriculum committees that when they are going to do this work, they have these statutes and rules in place. So it's a good reminder for the teaching and learning team.
Okay, so could I ask you, when Cheyenne just passed, you know, their Saxon Math curriculum, their approval, would this prohibit them from adopting that Saxon Math curriculum? Because that seemed to be a big thing that was said, that it didn't exactly align to Arizona standards. So I'm wondering if this is retaliatory to that adoption of the Saxon Math curriculum for Cheyenne?
I think retaliatory would be a strong word, just because it is statute that it was already applicable. Whether, perhaps Dr. Menzel could speak to it, whether there was a response to it or not.
So let's be clear that the state of Arizona has established standards that districts are expected to teach. That's part of the curriculum. If school boards decide that they don't care about those standards and they want to teach some other curriculum, they would be in violation of the law, but they can still do it. So when you have a policy that makes it clear that in order to ensure that our students are able to demonstrate proficiency, that we're going to actually teach the content that is tested by the state of Arizona and ensure that our students have the materials necessary to support their success on those assessments, this just reifies in-board policy that we're going to ensure. So when my team leads a curriculum review process and brings a recommendation forward, the policy says it's the governing board's expectation that that recommendation will conform with the state of Arizona adopted standards. It seems to me like it shouldn't be necessary, but. But from time to time, you might have arguments that there's a curriculum that somebody wants because they think it sounds really great, even though it's not aligned. And so this ensures that my team has the clear direction from the governing board that any recommendation that comes forward is aligned.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Ms. Sinowski, and I actually have a comment too.
Go ahead.
But, no, I'll go last, but go ahead. Ms. Sinowski?
Commenting on what Board Member Carney just asked. So my concern lies in approvals that might have been done recently for curriculum that does not include alignment with our Arizona state standards. Would those have to be revised then, that curriculum? Or how would we do that moving forward? I mean, that's just something, I know this is a first read, right? So can we have that as a consideration of what that would look like? And then inform the board what that looks like for previously adopted curriculum? It's more of a comment than a question.
So I would just, I would suggest that any policy adoption is on a go-forward basis. It's not retroactive. So the governing board has already adopted and moved forward on that one. So it's a moot point for the next three years. There'll be another time when it's reviewed again. At that point, you would have a policy in place that makes it clear what the expectations are. But it's not backcasting on those decisions.
Ms. Warner? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sinowski, are you finished?
No, I'm not.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for the clarification on that. And I appreciate that we're going to, from this point forward, have better practice of including, not bringing things to the board that don't follow state statute if this passes. Thank you.
Ms. Carney, were you finished? You turned your light off.
I wasn't, I turned it off just out of respect. I just would like to know, so how would this work with, say, our sex ed curriculum committee currently that's underway right now? How, what would this look like for that?
Well, that's part of what I was getting at with speaking to Arizona state standards. Sex ed curriculum is covered by 15711 and Arizona provides statute 15711. And then also significant language, as you know, I think you're on the committee. So this is for everyone else. I know you've already heard this, Board Member Carney. But our 7-2-303 has all the specifics. It's much like a state standard. The way it's specific, it's not as specific as a state standard, but there are outlines. And so that's why the suggestion for other applicable law would be appropriate to that line.
Okay, I'm just concerned, will this not eliminate or hinder publishers in curriculum that's not focused solely on Arizona? Will that?
Well, I mean, I am kind of a layperson here on teaching and learning, but I will speak a little bit to it because I have been a few of your board meetings. And I know that the curriculum adoptions I have seen, the committees have put substantial amount of work into reviewing instructional materials. This is very strong community as far as looking at materials and determining what meets state standards. I know that the sex ed curriculum itself spends a lot of time making sure that the standards or the law in this case applies. And so I think that the process is already in place. The statutes were already there. There's already intent to try and follow them. It just wasn't, it's just not currently in governing board policy. And it likely should be, in my opinion.
Okay, lastly, could I just ask if you, someone, Dr. Menzel, could provide the board with a list of any other current programs or curriculum that this would affect coming up for the new adoption? If you could give us a list of any other programs that don't align with Arizona standards that we currently have adopted? Thank you.
Ms. Warner?
So when Cheyenne's committee put forward Saxon, there was some disgruntlement on the dais and from, I think, one person in the community regarding that it was not up to standards. That is, special school, parents send their kids there for a specific reason for the traditional education. Saxon math happens to fall into that. The other options don't fall into traditional math. And so-
Ms. Warner, can I just caution you to stay on the agenda item, please? And we're not here to talk about a specific adoption. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm talking. So wouldn't that, moving forward with something like this, and if using the Saxon as an example, they put things in place that would have it fall in line to the standards? And so would that, would this policy prohibit someone from renewing Saxon? Again, having, adding some supplementals to bring it into, to bring it into standards?
Oh, in looking at the language as written, I think there's a little bit of flexibility there. Shall ensure alignment with Arizona state standards. Like I said to Board Member Carney's question, the curriculum committee and the professional staff here at SUSD is already trying to make sure that they're aligned to state standards. And so, you know, in the situation you're talking about, clearly supplemental materials have to be used in order to teach the state standards. But perhaps Dr. Benson would like to-
Can I ask a clarifying question now that we're back on the actual action item here? Is the question, is it okay to adopt curriculum that doesn't align with the state standards? Is that the question? Is that where we're at? Ms. Warner?
So not all electives fall into state standards, so-
Or applicable law. We are talking about a math curriculum, right? You were specifically citing-
I was specifically, yeah.
You want to make sure that there's enough play so that this school district can adopt curriculum that doesn't align with state standards, where there are state standards. You want to make sure that that's there? I just want to be clear on your academic achievement definition.
Well, based on results, the results from that particular curriculum, it produces excellent results.
Declining, declining. You missed that part.
So I have, I have said my piece on this, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Menzel would like to weigh in here, please.
So we have a pretty rigorous process for curriculum review where we invite publishers to submit their materials for review and consideration. There's a rubric that's used to be able to score those submissions. So any publisher can submit, but all publishers in the United States know that if they don't submit something that's aligned with the state standards in that state, they're going to compromise their ability to be considered for adoption. So I don't believe that this policy will have a chilling effect on any of the publishers because they already do this work to align their curriculum. What this does is provide some guidance for our team so that should someone in a curriculum adoption process want to push forward something that doesn't meet the standard, my team has the ability to go back and say, this is the expectation of the board. I think that's why this is important.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carney?
Thank you. Lastly, so I'm just confirming, with this policy as stated, Cheyenne would not have been able to adopt their Saxon math curriculum?
Not without the publisher providing a comprehensive approach that covered the standards that were not covered in Saxon. So it did not meet those expectations in the rubric. We brought it forward for the reasons that were articulated here previously. But it did not meet those standards. It didn't have, as you, it was mentioned by Board Member Werner, the supplemental material wasn't a part of the proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. All right, thank you, Mr. Boozin. We are going to move on. This was a first read, so feel free to submit subsequent questions in writing, please, so that they can be addressed by the next board meeting. We're moving on to item 7E, strategic plan, highlights of the STAT team progress and results of the 23, 24 KPIs. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I checked that off already. My apologies. We are on 7D. First read, governing board policy IKF regarding the graduation requirements and future-focused learning experiences, Dr. Benson.
Yes, this is a bit of a team effort this evening. Good evening again, President Hartwells, governing board, Dr. Menzel, and Mrs. Wagner, and all joining us here this evening. The need to update our graduation requirements has been coupled with questions on how we are preparing our students to be world-class and future-focused in step with our strategic plan. We've been intentional to situate these questions, K-12, considering the learning experiences and course offerings as part of all of our courses across each of our schools. Tonight, in conjunction with the policy update on graduation guidelines, we'll provide a brief update on ways we're being intentional to develop a common understanding of what future-focused learning experiences look like, what we need to be preparing our students for according to NCEE, the National Center on Education and the Economy. And we'll share just a couple of key current projects or examples that are in the works and next steps we've identified for fall 2024. First up is general counsel with the actual policy revision. Welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. I'm going to pass on introductions and greetings. IKF is a graduation requirement policy adopted by this governing board. The last time it was adopted was in 2010. There are several items in there that are for a different decade. They are diplomas that the district is no longer offering. And so it is, I think, time for the governing board to adopt an updated policy. There have been statutory changes since then. Ultimately, this is a baseline policy, a minimum requirements for graduation. The discussion that is going to be brought forward by Doctors Benson and Dodds Karen today include lots of examples of the opportunities, programs, program offerings far greater than the baseline here at SUSD. So the suggested policy change is a model policy that is a baseline. You know, the governing board could opt to include some of the offerings that it currently has at SUSD. We talked a lot this morning about where this information is outside of policy, you know, on the website, lots of other places. But this is a minimum requirement policy and it has up-to-date statutes, statutory changes that have occurred in the last few years. And with that, I will kick it off back to Dr. Benson.
Speaking of places where we can find this information, in conjunction with updating the IKF graduation policy, team members have been working on shifting the High School Planning Guide to a digital format, allowing students and families to search the guide by course or interest. This is mostly complete already and will be launched on the new website in July. And just wanted to pause and do a shout out to our High School Planning Guide Committee and our Communications Department for this upgrade. In our efforts to develop a shared understanding of what world-class and future-focused learning experiences look like with various stakeholder groups, we recently posed this question to all STAT team members. If the headline 2026 reads, "SUSD Leads the Way in Preparing Future-Ready Students", what do we do? And how did we earn that distinction? And after some conversation, we shared with them, according to NCEE, it means we prepared our students or are preparing our students for the fastest-growing jobs across the world, indicated in the right column on the slide before us, as identified in the 2223 World Economic Forum. In their Future of Jobs survey, they identified the fastest declining jobs as well, listed in the column at left. According to the NCEE, it's imperative that districts, schools, staff, and communities are well-informed about these data points when designing learner-centered and future-focused learning experiences that will serve our young people best. From that same group, the top skills identified as necessary for future-focused readiness indicated by the world of work are noted on this slide. That reading, writing, and math are 16th doesn't mean that the basics aren't or shouldn't be important and remain a focus. But it does mean we need to be intentional to develop analytical thinking, resilience, tech literacy, et cetera, while we teach reading, writing, and math. According to the NCEE, an important takeaway is this. Students across SUSD and other Valley districts are no longer just competing with each other or even other students across Arizona for the best universities, the best jobs, et cetera. Rather, they are competing with young people from around the world. And while new jobs will be created, most of these jobs will require not just retraining, but a much higher and deeper level of education as well as targeted technical training. And this is why policymakers and educational leaders are encouraged to focus on ensuring future-focused learning experiences, K-12. And with that, specific resources and examples we've shared with various stakeholders include those from NCEE, as we've shared here, how to assess critical thinking from PISA, and examples identified by the Center for Future of Arizona. We've asked our Dr. Kim Dodds Karen to highlight a few of the spaces we've been intentional to promote, a shared understanding this evening, and identify a couple of areas where we have evidence of progress or shifts. So with that, I would like to invite Dr. Dodds Karen next.
Good evening. I want to draw your attention to our slide. When we first began working with a variety of stakeholders listed here, High School Planning Guide, all of our administrators, counselors, leaders within high school breakout sessions, our academic behavioral curriculum teams, our strategic action teams, and our student advisory board. We included this clip art of the Jetsons. And we did that on purpose to help us think a little bit differently about what teaching and learning looks like today. And some of us may have watched the Jetsons when we were kids and thought about the Jetsons. But we never really imagined that there would be that autonomous driving car. And in fact, today, driving here, Dr. Benson said, I think I'm behind a car without a driver. And that is a reality. Today, we do have in airports, robots that are there to pick up dishes and lounges. And we have to be thinking to ourselves, what types of experiences do children need to have? Young children in our elementary schools, middle school students, high school students, in order to prepare them for those critical thinking skills, the collaborative work environments that are needed for the next-gen jobs that our kids are being prepared for when they leave Scottsdale Unified School District. So it was really important for us to begin the work with these different teams so that we could analyze the information. It was new learning for all of us. There's a sense of fear in the unknown of what could courses look like? How do we rethink a traditional school setting? And so working with these teams, we have, as Dr. Benson mentioned, looked at the work of NCEE, the Center for the Future of Arizona. We've looked at PISA. We've looked at different districts throughout our own state and across the country. And in doing so, we wanted to figure out, what are we doing here in Scottsdale Unified School District that's already heading down that road? And where can we think differently? So hyperlinked for you to see is how our different stakeholder groups have been reading information and making direct connections. What are the key details? What experiences today exist in Scottsdale Unified School District for our kids? Where can we think differently? And what are some of the big ideas that are emerging? One of the most important, I think, big ideas that has emerged is that this isn't something that lands in high school for a graduation-like, quote, requirement. There are so many sub-skills that begin in an elementary setting and a middle school setting. So that was a really important key takeaway for all of us. But something that we found really interesting is that student interest, opportunities for internships, mentorships, cross-curricular activities, interdisciplinary topics, as well as co-teach learning experiences where we bring in different types of experts to work side by side with our teachers and our students, would be really important for us to elevate the learning for that continuum of K-12, to bring together the goals of our district identified in our strategic plan as well. And to start to bring some of that to life, we want to highlight, Dr. Menzel mentioned this in his superintendent comments, but we relaunched our Summer Professional Development Institute after the pandemic. When we were all back, learning again, we knew it was important to bring our teachers together for continued learning. We just had our third Summer PD Institute. Our theme piggybacked off of the Olympics, minds wide open. And indeed, that is what occurred during the, about two weeks of Summer PD Institute. We had 59 sessions, over 500 seats filled. But this was an important time for us to begin to lay a foundation for teachers to make connections, from the theory that we've been reading in the research to the practice, the actual application of our teachers, of our staff members, and our school administrators who also attended the professional learning. We're proud to share some of the different examples aligned with our strategic plan. There were educational tech opportunities associated with Magic School and Canva, all of the ways that AI, which can feel so intimidating, how can that become a partner to us in our learning for ourselves as teachers as well as for our students as learners? We did a lot of really neat things with some interdisciplinary learning. Our new CKLA, English Language Arts, K-5 curriculum adoption, integration with arts. So connecting Diane Murphy's work and Michelle Urban's work and helping teachers see that interdisciplinarity. We also had some neat opportunities for our earliest learners. Our preschool teachers, bringing in an outside consultant, again echoing the importance of our strategic plan and our partnerships, to bring in our community partners in our learning. Those are a few ways that we've started to prepare our teachers and our staff are thinking a little bit differently. and our staff for thinking a little bit differently. Some other ways that we've identified, some progress that we're making, is we looked back at what have you, as a Governing Board, helped us to approve in our planning guides? Specifically, in the High School Planning Guide, you, as a board, approved an internship course. This was brought forward through CTE, working with our SIMAR department. We thought differently about an instructional time model so that we could be offering kids opportunities to explore and do the work of experts to see, is what I'm interested in, something that I actually like doing. And so internships have been neat. We also brought forward to you a year ago with our science adoptions, a next layer of thinking about our science pathways. And how could we be looking at our curriculum course selections differently? Physics enrollment, if you take a look at these numbers, we're excited about it. Seven teachers this year in 27 sections of physics. Next year, we'll have 10 teachers and 32 sections of physics. In just one year, we have a big shift in kids taking physics. We're proud of that. We also looked at what we're also doing in our high schools. At Chaparral and Suaro High School, we have been fortunate to be accepted by the College Board for the AP Capstone Diploma. This is kind of like a parallel to the IB Diploma, except there's a little bit of a different focus, being that it's from the College Board. But in order to be eligible for the AP Capstone Diploma, a student has to experience a level of rigor in their coursework that is a little bit different than perhaps a typical peer. Students must take, pass, I should say, four AP exams in addition to taking AP Seminar and AP Research. AP Seminar is typically taken by a 10th or an 11th grader, and AP Research is taken by an 11th or 12th grade. It follows AP SEM. AP Research is, again, built off of the work of N C E E, interest-based. What is it that kids are curious to know more about? What is a passion of theirs? What's a concern they have in their school community, in their home community, in the world? And they get to ask a driving question, and then they get to research. They can work side by side with experts. They learn how to conduct research. They analyze information in order to gain understanding of whatever that topic was. Linked for you all are some examples of the projects that our students have been working on this past year. We have had 20 kids who passed their four AP exams, completed those two courses, and have earned their AP Capstone Diploma this year in our most recent graduating class. So this was a recognition that we wanted to bring forward to say, "S U S D already is on the road, and how do we, you know, just make it even greater?" I'm going to share with, Dr. Benson will share with you a little bit about that next step in a road with what we are doing with the Math and Science Academy and a pathway for MSA.
Thank you. Other examples, as Dr. Dodds Karen just mentioned, in development that are worthy, really, of their own agenda item include the expansion of the Math and Science Academy planned at Mojave, connecting the learning experiences at Navajo Elementary with those at Suaro. And wanted to pause and do a shout out to Principal Ferraro and our Director of Gifted Services, Sarah Torion, and our Teaching and Learning Team members, Johanna Kaiser and Donna Dempsey, for their continued progress to bring this to fruition fall of 2025. Fantastic proposal. Again, we've shared that with the Governing Board by B memo, but wanted to bring this to the public's awareness, too, to make sure that we have a little bit of a wedding of the appetite so people can learn more. And again, I would welcome consideration for future agenda item on this item alone so persons can learn more. Also wanted to do a little shout out in step with the birth of the Innovation Center at Suaro. Wanted to pause and give a nod of thanks to new principal, Melinda Splitick, and Dr. Sakos for engaging in meetings to kindle the continued interest of the Foundation in entrepreneurship and innovation as one significant piece to the Coronado advantage. We've sent B memos on this, too, but wanted to highlight both in public as examples of continued forward progress across our schools and invite consideration, again, as agenda items so the Board and the community can learn more moving forward in the year ahead.
The work of the High School Planning Guide never seems to end. And things that we are going to be bringing forward in the work that we continue in the fall when everyone's back is working with our CTE team and designing the 612 pathways for the 16 career clusters. We want to make a concerted effort for additional capstones and specialized projects. We have the AP Capstone also at Suaro High School with our dual-language immersion. Students can do the Spanish Capstone as well to earn their full immersion, a special recognition for DLI there. Additionally, we have SEALs of Bili literacy, SEALs of Fine Arts, SEALs of Personal Finance that our students have been earning through the Arizona Department of Education. And these are ways to recognize that kids have become very knowledgeable, not to the point of an expert, per se, but they have a commitment to and an application and understanding. So these are ways that we believe we can enhance and expose more students to these opportunities. There's been conversation about rethinking that 1.0 PE credit. How is it that we can integrate wellness through health and also thinking about our student athletes? The instructional time model, this is something we've already begun the work on for internships, the community volunteering, and then, most recently, the elite athlete. That, obviously, those are all important here for us in our Scottsdale community. In the topic of curriculum adoptions, we'll be looking at a Scottsdale online curriculum adoption. So when we're thinking about what does the virtual learning experience look like, not just for a sole student, but also for the student who takes the blended learning. So on all of our brick-and-mortar campuses, a student might take a blended learning version of a particular course because maybe the traditional brick-and-mortar course doesn't fit well with their schedule. And so we want to be thinking about what does that e-learning curriculum really look like to make it an authentic, enriched, rigorous experience for students? And then, as Dr. Benson mentioned, too, the outward-facing planning guide for families so that they can search. So that, I think about a student, she's spoken here before from Student Advisory Board, but her family moved from the Netherlands. And when her family moved, she had been at an IB school. So they specifically chose Desert Mountain High School because it was going to continue her IB pathway. One of the neat things about our new digital guide that Stephen has helped us to create is you can search based on what your either family interest might be or what your strength might be and/or, you know, where you're coming from. Because we get a lot of transplants here in Arizona. And so that'll be a nice way for us to create that pathway, a visual pathway for families to see, "If I want my students to do X, Y, or Z, this would be a course sequence for them, and these are the schools that offer that sequence for them." So we're looking forward to some of those next steps. I mentioned, though, before, it doesn't all land on the shoulders of the high school folks. So when we think about middle school, we have to be rethinking our middle school courses as well. Within our state, we have new educational technology standards. We really need to take a look at those. We need to look at digital literacy coding, artificial intelligence aligned with our ed tech standards, reevaluate our existing courses for computers, for STEM, so that we can make sure that our courses we're offering to our kids are at their readiness level. A lot of our courses that we currently offer were created years ago. Our kids are coming to us with more knowledge now. Most importantly, though, we want the experiences for kids, as indicated through N C E E. We want it to be based on interest as well. So how can we make things that are relevant to kids? How can we draw them in? How can we, though, foster analytical and creative thinking? We also are mindful of how much time kids are on computers, their responsible use of technology. Been working with Dr. Watt and Christine Harrington on a media literacy campaign that we're looking forward to launching as well. So there are a lot of, a lot of people involved in helping to ensure forward progress in ways that we can be redesigning already-strong systems for learning in our schools.
We appreciate the opportunity to respond to questions about how we're being intentional to build capacity and plan for future-focused learning experiences and to also provide a little more context to the policy update on graduation requirements. And with that, we invite your questions and comments.
Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Warner?
Could you tell me more about the PE credit moving to a health and wellness?
Yes, Board Member Warner. That's only been a question posed in a handful of different settings at this time and an invitation to explore during High School Planning Guide next year. So it's not a proposal at this point. It's been, we've been invited to look at and compare what other districts do, especially if, as we have elite athletes or persons that are, kids are in other sports, whether or not part of the 1.0 PE credit could count for other activities that they do. And in that same conversation, it's been, we've been invited to think about, what is it that the CPR and the other wellness things, other wellness subjects that we do, what that might look like for another half? So it's just been, we've been invited to look into that further. We have had conversations with high school principals, who are in favor of us checking that out further, too, maybe splitting up what that requirement looks like so that we can be honoring students' interests in other areas of physical activity, too, and not just require the full 1.0 in PE. I'm hopeful that answers the question. So it's just an explanation, an invitation to explore and further consideration during the High School Planning Guide process in the fall.
And you were invited by who? Who did this invitation?
Multiple persons have asked about it. We've had parents ask about it. We've had students ask about it. We've had teachers ask about it. We've had Governing Board members ask about it. Community members ask about it.
Interesting. Okay, so I'm gravely concerned about taking out PE. I think it is such an opportunity for kids who aren't necessarily in sports to have an opportunity to work as a team in a physical environment. And physical exercise is something that is vital to all of us. I know you're an avid exerciser yourself, and taking that out is very concerning. The other piece of this is the PE teachers tend to be coaches. So I think that there's going to be a trickle-down effect on this that would be harmful to our district. And I think it's a terrible idea, but thank you.
So can I just clarify that there's not a proposal to take the PE credit off? It's a proposal to consider what kids are doing and those that are really active in other sports, maybe upper-level sports. Can they get credit for part of that as they move through their high school experience? So very much a supporter and understand and recognize the value of physical activity. So it's not a proposal to eliminate the PE requirement, but to think differently about it and pursue potential ideas about how we can get that right. We would definitely want to be involving our teachers in any conversations with this, too, which is why this can't go, and we wouldn't want it to go forward until there would be more conversations during the High School Planning Guide.
Yeah, because it's also my understanding that this would be a half-credit, and then the following year, it would go into, PE would be removed, and it would just be the health and wellness. So...
So that idea has not been proposed or shared with me. So I appreciate you posing it here so we could clarify in the event that that's misinformation that's being circulated. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Board members? Thank you. I have a question. So the policy proposal before us is simply a compliance policy with recalibrated state law?
General Counsel, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, that's correct.
So clearly, the policy is outdated because of references to laws that don't apply anymore, don't exist, tests that don't exist. So I get that part. That's a practical action. My question, and perhaps, Dr. Menzel, you could share your thoughts, is how the bare minimum graduation requirements is future-focused?
So I would, I would say that two separate conversations. So the graduation requirements, in terms of addressing that in the policy, is a compliance document. We've been operating for 100 years with the Carnegie Unit. It's an antiquated way of being able to grant credit, demonstrate competence. You mark time in a seat, and if you get a certain grade, you get credit. It doesn't really reflect what we would expect from a future-focused system. There are conversations happening in the state of Arizona. I'm being convened out of Northern Arizona University with high schools, high school districts, as well as unified districts, community colleges, four-year universities, and the private sector to really tackle this question of how do we rethink the high school experience so that it truly is future-focused? And to that end, it means you have to tackle the thorny question of the Carnegie Unit. Part of that is a state-level conversation. We've got things in statute that require us to meet certain credits in order to be able to give a diploma. That's not future-focused, but we have to comply. On the flip side, we also need universities to change the way that they're accepting level of readiness and preparedness because they're looking for, have you taken four English? And have you taken four math? And have you taken three sciences? And the lab sciences are important. So we're doing a balancing act here to say that the signal, the wayfinders that were represented on that, on the slides that talked about what the jobs of the future are from N C E E and the work that's being done, not only in terms of what you get high school credit, but those experiences leading up elementary, middle school. Collectively, that becomes what is future-focused. The system itself doesn't allow us to break the mold at the present time because then our students won't be prepared for acceptance into elite colleges and universities because they're still looking at the old Carnegie Unit. So it's a both-hand. It's how do we get into compliance? And then how do we ensure that the things that are in those planning guides and the experiences that our students have really expose them to what they need in the future, not what was relevant in the past?
Thank you. I don't have any other comments. If there are no more questions, thank you, Dr. Benson and Dr. Dodds Karen.
Thank you, General Counsel, and Dr. Dodds Karen for helping and supporting this conversation.
All right, now we are ready for Item 7E, Strategic Plan: Highlights of the STAT Team Progress and Results of the 2324 KPIs. And I believe, Dr. Benson, you are leading that as well.
This one's a team effort, too. Good evening again. Tonight, we appreciate this opportunity to provide a brief update of the highlights of progress on our strategic action teams, share preliminary results of the key performance indicators established for the 2324 school year. And along the way, we'll disclose a couple of key steps from team members that we've initially identified to guide continuous improvement efforts for 2425. Given its significance, this is the most comprehensive agenda item of this evening. So again, we'd like to invite Board members to jot down questions and pose at the end of the presentation to be most respectful to the other agendas yet on tap for this evening. To set the stage and provide a little context for those that may not be familiar with our strategic plan journey, S U S D's strategic planning efforts were initiated in the spring semester of 2021 with Governing Board approval and launch in June and July 2022. A lot happened within those phases reflected on the slide before you. We're now in a cycle of continuous improvement, which involves continued work towards the goals and initiatives we've identified, reflection, monitoring and reporting out our progress, and then re-establishing performance measures each year. Situating the plan as our compass for continuous improvement efforts, five strategic action teams continue to lead implementation efforts towards the goals identified in our strategic plan. At this time, I wanted to pause and shout out the leaders of the strategic teams, our strategic action teams identified on the slide in front of us, and the 65-plus team members continuing to serve on these teams across S U S D. Leaders and members of the teams in attendance this evening invite you to wave and allow us the opportunity to recognize and thank you. Waves lots. Team members are part of that. Thank you. Prior to inviting our leaders to share out highlights of the progress specific to our strategic action teams, wanted to remind all of the alignment of our goals and that have been identified in our strategic plan and the work of our teams. All of the teams are directly aligned to a goal in the strategic plan, as reflected in the slide before us, with the exception of innovation in teaching and learning as that work of that team is cross-cutting across all of our goals. Also wanted to remind all that the goals were crafted to acknowledge that forward progress on each goal requires a multi-year commitment and an implementation on the part of our strategic action teams. During our final AllSTAT team meeting this spring, team members reassessed the progress specific to each of our goals, and they made adjustments to the original timeline, indicated by the Xs that you can see in contrasting white font on the slide. Areas of adjustment reflected in the initiatives indicates a variation in progress by level or area. For example, MTSS A or B assessing the progress at our elementary, middle, and high schools. Or it notes areas that we have exceeded timeline expectations or that may require a little more time and attention to ensure for further forward progress. While there is much to highlight across each team, given the breadth and scope of the agenda items at this board meeting, each STAT team will share three outcomes, a key learning this year, and a key next step identified for 2425. Again, big thanks to my colleagues for the Herculean efforts to lead these teams. First up, I believe we have Dr. Dodds Karen going to provide an update on our MTSSA.
Okay, the work of the MTSSA, the academic layer of multi-tiered systems of support. Dr. Bachner and I were co-leads for this, and we're proud to bring forward to you three of our outcomes being, one, messaging and support for the use of our Tier 1 district-adopted materials. adopted materials, minimum 80% of the time during the school day. We've made a lot of efforts for this. Of course, our instructional coach is working directly with teachers, but also making sure that all layers of the organization are aware of our instructional materials, what they look like, what all of the components are and how they can be utilized within our classrooms. One really proud moment, I guess if we were ranking these in order, would be the secondary flow map for MTSSA. In the elementary world, we've had a flow map of what do those systems look like from tier one that leads to tier two? When things aren't working so well in tier two, what does that mean for tier three? We've had that tight for elementary, especially in English Language Arts aligned with move on when reading. As we were doing our research for secondary, we first read an article and the secondary folks thought, how can this work? What would this look like? How do we utilize time? Who does this? Is it me? Is it someone else? And linked for you as a governing board and for the community is a draft of the flow map that our committee has put together. We're excited to introduce it to teachers who are not on our committee when we return to school. But this does provide us a layer. Another support of this flow map is the commitment that you all granted us, the ability to utilize time a little bit differently in the middle school for advisory enrichment intervention. So we have the 24 minutes within a school day where we can target kids who are struggling with reading, struggling with math, or kids who are ready to go, kids who need an enrichment push. What can that look like for supporting our kids? And then also this evening, when you see me again for supplemental materials, I'm going to be talking with you a little bit about an intervention resource. You approved at the last governing board meeting the use of a K5 instructional tool for iExcel, an adaptive digital resource for English Language Arts and Math. We would like to make a recommendation that we have a continuum, a K12 continuum, where we have resources that would be available to support teachers with their students, allow kids an opportunity to utilize a curriculum for English Language Arts and Math that is of interest to them, that is adaptive to their readiness, and would also provide us diagnostic assessments that we can track through our WHO New It system with our assessment department so that teachers, when we transition from grade level to grade level, can monitor the progress of our students. So those are our top three outcomes that we're very proud of. Key learning is that our systems can be reimagined. It's a little bit daunting, as we said before, changes is a little bit scary, but we can rethink things. And that secondary is really proud to think about tier two, tier three, and what can that look like for all of our students. And moving forward, as a governing board, two years ago, you approved the use of district results-based funds for an MTSSA specialist. We haven't been able to fill that position, but we do have applicants that we're looking to fill for the, the one remaining year of that position. And we also want to make sure that using our MTSSA tills, that our campuses really understand the responsibilities of MTSSA and all of us working together to support our students. And with that, I want to introduce Shannon Cron to come on up. She's the partner to Cindy and I. When it comes to MTSS, we have the academic side and we also have the behavioral side. We believe they go hand in hand. And Shannon will share a little bit about MTSSB and culture and climate.
Thank you. Good evening. I have the pleasure of being able to help facilitate the MTSSB committee with Dr. Sakos and Matt Lins, who are both unable to be here tonight. But I'm honored to share with you our top three outcomes, key learning, and what we are looking forward to next year. So all of our campuses have had several positive practices that they have implemented, implemented over the last several years. But this past year, where all of our campuses have initiated an MTSSB framework, which means they have regular, monthly, regular means monthly, at least monthly, tier one and tier two meetings. We provide them with a data packet so they're able to look at their data, what behaviors are happening on their campus, and then action plan using the TIPS agenda. So identifying problems and figuring out how we're going to address those needs and those issues on our campus. We've also framed out secondary, our tier two intervention processes that promote easy access to intervention. And so we, when we are able to identify a student that is in need of support, they don't have to wait to get that support. We have processes in place where that can be, they can easily be matched to an intervention or support on campus. And we've also had students report more positive outcomes in terms of belonging and feeling welcome on campus. So that is evidenced in our handover data. So that is something that we're very proud of as well. In terms of key learning, those secondary, meaning tier, well, secondary, middle and high school, tier two interventions require a different approach to progress monitoring. We've also learned that tier three plans require significant coaching for proper and meaningful implementation. And even just this morning in a conversation that I was having with several people in this room, we were talking about just behavior. Oftentimes, when we think about behavior, we're thinking about the student who might engage in non-teacher pleasing behaviors or the student that's, you know, defiant or disruptive in the classroom. But it's really so much more than that. And so I want to share with you a success story for one of our tier three students. And this is a student who came to SUSD his first year and he had a lot of challenges in pre-K and in kindergarten where he was not able to successfully stay in school. And what parents had shared with us and what we learned pretty quickly was there was a lot of anxiety, separation anxiety. And so when he would come to school, he would cling to the car door and cling to parents. And it manifested in that school refusal. And so for the first month, month and a half of school, just getting him in the front door was a challenge. And parents reported, you know, he wasn't able to attend birthday parties or, you know, stay at home with a babysitter. There was just that, you know, significant degree of anxiety there. And so we worked very closely with the student, with the family, and referred him to our PALS program, which is that positive approaches to learning, where he had a very small team that was able to identify, you know, how to really support him and set, you know, short-term kind of measurable or manageable goals, work very closely with the family and help support them with identifying, you know, providers in the community that were able to work with the family. And eventually, not only did we get him in school, he was able to attend, you know, specials. He was with his class. He was able to, you know, eat lunch in the cafeteria for the first time ever with his class. Eventually, he has been pushed back out into a typical or traditional classroom for the entire day and third quarter he earned a perfect attendance award. And so I just love that story because I think it just really kind of speaks to, you know, behavior looks so different. And we're here to really support all of our students, all of our families. And it's just so broad, so much broader than we often, you know, think. Moving forward, this, well, this past year, we were able to implement the school-wide evaluation tool, which looked at all of our systems across campuses and, you know, where our teams really needed additional support in terms of, you know, implementing MTSS with fidelity. Next year, we're going to be implementing the tiered fidelity inventory, which looks at each tier and are we implementing those tiers with fidelity? We've also scheduled resource mapping for our tier two and tier three interventions where we're going to be bringing our support teams and our administrators together to look at data and identify what interventions and supports we need on our campuses moving forward. So, and with that, I am happy to introduce Christine Harrington, who's going to share more with you regarding the amazing partnerships that we have created. So, thank you.
So what's a little unique about our strategic partnership group is that we have partners who are on our team. So most of our teams are all comprised of teachers and those internal stakeholders, if you will. But we also have a CHRO, we have a foundation member, we have a chamber member, who are also there to learn very much about our programs. And so super proud of the leadership and the co-leads that I have with Michelle Irvin and Amy Downs. And as such, this year, we took our show on the road and our meetings were held at different high schools and middle schools so that we could really demonstrate what CTE and different learning looks like today, so that our industry partners and community partners could see what potential alignment and opportunities exist. So that was one thing that we sort of shifted this year. Now, as far as our top three outcomes, our process for collecting partnerships and internships, this has been an ongoing effort. And now, especially with the new website rolling out, but already on the current website, we have new forms that are uploaded on our partnership website. And then all of our schools and employees have access to them in our internet on homeroom. The forums are interest forums. So anybody in the public who is interested in finding ways to either sponsor or to partner with us to offer employment, volunteer opportunities, or internship opportunities to our students can fill out a form there. And then it automatically is sent to many inboxes. So it goes to our counselors at our high schools right away. So they can immediately get that to the students who have an interest. And then additionally, to our leads, our team, and the communications department. So that was a big step in the right direction, just so we could start to formalize this and then understand who our prospective partners are and continue to outreach. We've also been working on creating sort of a tiered system of recognition. So developing a partnership directory so we can highlight who our partners are. In fact, you could, you know, in the future, once this is, this is actually live, sort and filter by industry, but then additionally have tiered recognition. So we want to know who those, you know, platinum partners are that are doing and giving and sharing so much with our students, providing opportunities and additionally sometimes resources, time and talent to our schools, our staff, as well as our students. We're also working on deepening engagement with the city and community partners. And again, I'm, this is why it's so impactful to have a CHRO, a foundation member or a chamber member on this team because they start to really see and feel the difference that is made in our classrooms and think about how that can translate to the real world. And so we're working with the chamber. We've got some, already, we have an event planned for the upcoming year where our students will be able to connect with industry leaders that are aligned with their career pathway, hopefully develop internships, but at a bare minimum, a better understanding of what lies ahead and how to prepare for that. We also always update and celebrate our partners on social media as well as, of course, in the monthly source under the partnership log. And what we do is every month, we compile all that information in the source, all those department updates, and we send it out through Constant Contact in an email form to all of those partners and prospective partners and families who tour. And what's most astounding to me is the read rate. I mean, it's like 75% last month. The clicks, we get like 10% clicks sometimes, sometimes it's less, but we've had less than 1% unsubscribe. This is a very engaged group of people that are very much interested in what it is that we have to offer. So I'm always really impressed by the feedback that we receive. So key learning, again, we're continuing to establish those communication, you know, opportunities and celebrate partners. Moving forward, we're most excited about developing a summit, an opportunity to connect, to network, to celebrate and highlight the good things that are happening so that we can continue to build on that, use some of those as models moving forward. So, thank you so much. And now I have the pleasure of introducing Assistant Superintendent of HR Alexis Wilson, talking about all the reasons why people choose SUSD and then choose to stay.
Thank you. Very proud of the human resources team, including my co-leads, Amy Goff and Dr. Susan Logo, who are here this evening. As a result, our top three outcomes really center around systems that have been improved, including in alignment with internal review and also with the Phase One Audit. We've revised our hiring process. We are better utilizing the platforms capabilities. We've automatized both our resignation and personnel report for more efficient work. We've reduced steps in the PAR workflow, which is how people get paid, people get hired, people change positions. And we reorganized the human resources teams to have HR specialists serving learning communities. In addition to that, we have mentoring programs in place for both teachers and a subset of our classified employees. In this school year alone, we had 73 first-year teachers that were supported in partnership with our teaching and learning team throughout S U, SUSD. That included four special education brand-new teachers. I'm pleased to report all four of those special education teachers are returning next year. As you know, that is a critical need. And so we're very pleased about that. Additionally, we created a classified mentor program and implemented that this year. And we had five identified classified administrative support coordinators who supported 14 new, those were in their first through third year in their positions. And of those 14, 13 of those are returning. And our last outcome that we would like to highlight is the teacher residency program that we have in partnership with the Arizona K12 NAU program. We did maintain four of those five residents. One of them did move out of the district and three of those have been hired for school year 24-25. Additionally, in partnership with ASU, we have a teaching fellows program. Those are paraeducators that are earning both their bachelor's degree and their teacher certification so that they may become teachers. And three of those still are in the program and working toward completion of their degree and their certification. I think our key learning really centers in making sure that all of our decisions are around kids, because kids. We want to make sure that we've got the very best employees for our students. How we did that, we improved the processes. We've trained folks. We've cleaned up the data within the system. And we definitely have to make sure that we keep the focus on who, who is doing this work. As I mentioned, we reorganized the HR team to make sure that we had a HR specialist that is dedicated to a learning community and a department or two to provide high level of support and customer service to those that are closest to the students. So we started that with training our HR team, training the administrative assistant coordinators at the schools, training our administrators both at the school and district level, and making sure that we understand that we are, that interdependence is key in making sure that we're all working as one team. So as we move forward, we have to make sure that we maintain that high level of interdependence because it is paramount in this work. We're stronger together when we're working together. And when we're working as one team with our partners in payroll and finance and special education and teaching and learning, it allows us to continue to provide the training, the support, the quality customer service for both improved retention and recruitment efforts. So I'm very proud of the work we've done in HR this year. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. David Pruninski, who's going to talk about innovation in teaching and learning.
Thank you. Good evening. Our Innovation Stat Team co-led with Dr. Michelle Watt in addition to SUSD teachers and leaders from throughout the district. This year wants to celebrate the design and implementation of our application system, which has allowed seven SUSD teachers to showcase innovation for students in SUSD. These innovation startup grants, along with our grantee impact reports, lay a solid foundation for current and future innovation in Scottsdale. Looking forward to next fall, the upcoming projects at Echo Canyon and Redfield offer new opportunities for our students surrounding robotic engineering and coding. As we prepare for future innovation projects in Scottsdale, we carry forward next year, lessons learned and successes achieved from this year, striving for continuous innovation and ongoing professional development for our teachers. Let's also not forget the vital role that this team has played with examining AI tools to include Magic School, an AI teacher toolbox which enhances both student learning outcomes, supports teacher planning, and the teacher workspace in general. Magic School training was recently offered as part of our summer PD Institute and continues to have favorable, favorable reviews amongst our SUSD staff. Moving forward, as we lay the groundwork for innovation in SUSD, our team continues to find future-focused solutions to the ever-evolving student and ever-evolving teacher. Our team looks forward to our continued work in the 24-25 school year. Next up, I'd like to invite up Shannon Crozier, who's going to share her team's work with optimizing resources. Thank you.
Well, I'm excited tonight to talk about optimized resources. Our team had a lot of really robust conversations about software and utilization of software. How do we track what we're using and making sure that what we're purchasing is being utilized and it's effective. So one of the great things that we were able to do through those conversations and working with the IT department is we purchased, we looked at different resources out there, made a purchase in February and implemented a software that now tracks the software that's out there, how it's being used and when it's being used. So we can see if that's part of the classroom, it's part of the evening homework or something fun that a student's doing in the evening. But we can look to see if it's being used, how many licenses are being used, and if it's effective. So we're excited about that. One of our other key outcomes had to do with progress monitoring and how we're spending our money in the Auditor General's Classroom Spending Report. Our target goal was 71.3% of classroom spending. We met that goal, exceeded it just a little bit, but we're excited about that. One thing that's not in here that I think also feeds into that part is we put in emphasis on looking at how we can utilize bulk purchasing. And so with a part of, so with doing that this year, we put a standard on classroom furniture. We did the bulk purchase of that. We did the bulk purchase of that and we're able to save $190,000. So that's a huge, that's a huge impact to our budget and puts more money into other areas. And then the last one is the Facility Use Decision Matrix. That was approved by the governing board earlier this year, I think in December. Looking at the properties that we do have, if there's not campus and on that, happening at that site, how can we utilize those properties more efficiently and gain resources from that? And I'm excited to say that that was approved and that Mr. Rayler will actually be demonstrating in June 25th Board Meeting, how we've used that matrix and how that helped with some decision-making on the 68th Street property. So we're excited about that. One of our key learnings that we also talked a lot about this year was if we have the systems and we have a way to look at what's being utilized and making sure that it is utilized, how do we make sure that we monitor that and then ensure that utilization and realize the value on our investment? So we have the tool now to look at how is the software being, is it being utilized? Now making sure that that gets monitored and we make decisions based off what we see from that. And then moving forward, kind of in that same line, is continuing to monitor and track the utilization of our software and supplementals. We worked quite extensively with the Teaching and Learning and Finance Department to look at what is every supplemental that's purchased out there, where it's being purchased from, what funding sources are being used, and does that fit in line with our MTSSA expectations and what we know works for the classroom?
Thank you, co-leads of our strategic action teams for the robust summaries of the work we've got going on. Is my tech team moving this around or would you like me to move it around? There we go. Thank you very much. Before we jump into and transition into the KPI part of our metrics, wanted to pause and thank our Stephen and Catherine too. Stephen and our communications team has created a dashboard to continue to share our results publicly. You might remember we did that last year as well. But as we transitioned to the new website in July, he has eliminated the need for a vendor to continue to do so, taking it on himself. So it's a stellar example of our commitment to optimize resources with some COF savings there too. So appreciate the talents across the team. This year, we provided the board with quarterly updates on our KPIs, which team members are planning to continue in the year ahead as that allows for continued forward progress monitoring. But tonight, we have final results to date on our KPIs for the 2324 school year, and they are linked in this slide. We've got to move to the next one. There we go. Try to pop that up. There we go. Even though the fiscal year doesn't end until June 30th and state assessment results are not finalized until the fall, our results are preliminary, but we've committed to report them out initially at the same time each year in these conversations with our board. Key areas of success indicated across our KPI results and reflected in the work of the strategic action teams include increased graduation rates and percentage of students enrolled in college-level courses in all demographics. And if people are following along, I see others in our link as well. Each tab includes the KPIs and our final progress. Other celebrations include increased student attendance. We met our KPI above 92.5%. A big shout out to Executive Director Margaret Serna and the team members that we had in our attendance campaign all year. That's significant. Increased retention rates, admin certified and classified employee groups all had increased retention rates. Increased internship opportunities and enrollment for internships and work-based learning for 2425. And that we've successfully developed a system and as Shannon Crozier has indicated, a tool to track software utilization to support our continued efforts to optimize resources moving forward. Going to scoot back. Tech team, you can take us back to our main slide deck. Areas requiring continued attention and focus include enrollment and academic progress. We've written the bulk of our academic goals as stretch goals as we are committed to high standards of excellence in SUSD. To provide context of our academic KPI metrics, you may have noticed we included a comparison to peer districts in the valley as we know of those results thus far. Dr. Bachner's team accumulates self-reported data from districts to support our analysis each spring, and we share ours as well. Eight of the 22 districts reporting are part of the top 10 that we typically use as our comparison peer districts when reporting out each fall. This context is really important this year in understanding the complexity of state and district results this spring. While our results are again, on average, 20 points higher than state averages in AAS. We're digging into the data to develop plans to accelerate learning for the next year. Couple of key context reminders as we analyze our data include recommendations from psychometricians to caution leaders from situating responsibility for results squarely with the pandemic as some trends in academics and especially in student reports of wellness across the country were identified prior to the disruption to learning experienced by the pandemic. Understanding that results reflect significant variation across our state valley and across SUSD requires that we ask really good questions to better understand where celebrations and extra supports are warranted. Though again, our comparison to districts reveals we outperform other districts, we can and are committed to doing better. And we know that it makes a difference if we partner with our stakeholder groups and involve and are inclusive of our families to continue learning and extended learning beyond the school day as well. So I just wanted to add one more caution from jumping to conclusions. I've had lots of conversations over the course of the last couple of weeks, another one with a colleague today that shared with me every time I think I have, okay, this is maybe what happened in this classroom with this teacher or with this group of students. Oftentimes, it just leads to another question. So it's been very complex and very rigorous initial conversations and looking at our data. Though these results to state testing just reflect one snapshot in time in our schools, they are an important piece of the aggregate puzzle of our forward progress. So tonight, Dr. Bachner is going to share a couple of slides of information and a key learning at third grade that provides important additional context to our preliminary results to the state testing this spring. Dr. Bachner will also, with her team, they've already engaged in or initiated a deeper analysis, and we'll share that with our board when finished this summer and when results are finalized in the fall. As typical, team members will bring back the results, the full results of our state testing. So with that, Dr. Bachner, I invite you to join me at the podium and provide a few highlights of our data.
On the screen now are the preliminary results of the State Assessment in ELA, or English Language Arts. All of our students in grades three through eight take this assessment once a year in the spring. The scores in the table on the left are the Arizona State scores overall, while the chart on the right shows the scores of our Scottsdale students. SUSD students did better this spring in grades four, five, six, and seven on the ELA assessment. This next slide depicts the preliminary results, again, of the AAS math assessment. Again, all of our students in grades three through eight take this assessment once a year. The scores in the table on the left are again, the Arizona State results overall, while the chart on the right shows the scores of our Scottsdale students year over year. SUSD student math scores stayed the same in seventh grade but decreased in other grade levels, while the state trend showed decreases in all grade levels except for third grade. Our 2023-2024 third-grade cohort were in kindergarten when COVID disrupted learning and families opted to keep their students in online learning for the school year. In order to have clarity on where we need to provide additional support, we identified students who attended school with us in person during kindergarten, those who attended remotely with us that same year, and finally, our students who were not enrolled at Scottsdale at all during the 2020-2021 school year. You can see in this, in these tables that our students who attended SUSD schools in person for kindergarten are outperforming their peers who attended school remotely that year. But both groups outperformed students who were not enrolled in SUSD in 2020-2021. This trend was seen in both English and math. While not on the screen tonight, we found a similar trend in grades four, four through eight. In summary, students who spend the most time in our schools tend to do better on the state assessments. Finally, this last slide is an amalgamation of state testing results on several other assessments. Starting at the top left, state results for the ACT Aspire are presented next to our district results. All Arizona ninth graders took the ACT Aspire, which is a precursor to the ACT. Looking at the table labeled ACT Aspire SUSD Results, you can see that our ninth graders demonstrated improvements in English and math this spring as compared to the previous year's ninth graders. Moving on to the next set of tables, the ACT results. All 11th graders in our district took the ACT this spring. In the table labeled ACT SUSD Results, our students improved their performance in reading and science as compared to the previous spring while maintaining their performance in math. Our overall district composite scores stayed the same, while our national percentile rank improved slightly due to the national student performance on ACT decreasing. Finally, the results at the bottom of the slide show our science assessment performance and the state results as well. SUSD students did better in 11th grade this past spring while our fifth and eighth grade scores reflect a modest decrease from the previous year's students. And now I'll turn this back over to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Dr. Bachner. I think it's really important for us to think about in terms of our data, the difference between comparing third-grade data to fourth-grade data, the cohort data, and third-grade data this year to next, to last year's third-grade data. We have a teacher that tends to score very, very high in SUSD, consistently high. And if we don't look at both the cohort data, it can be misleading to suggest there was a change in the performance of a teacher when it's not the same group of kids. So I just think that's really important. The conversations have been rich and invite the one team thoughtful, shared responsibility conversations to continue across SUSD moving forward. Little more additional context to science that Dr. Bachner had just shared. We know that we're in year one of our implementation of resources that were adopted last year by our governing board and that we've had a second layer of that adoption this year that we'll be implementing next year. Johanna Kaiser, our academic coach, had shared with us a reminder yesterday that we are in the first year implementation, or first year of recognizing that the students that started, the cohort data is the first time that we have it. So our students that started at third, fourth, and fifth, this is their first shot at taking that test at grade five, six, seventh, and eighth, their first shot at taking the test at grade eight, and so on. Lots of conversations at work in understanding our data. So next steps include, as we've alluded to, further data analysis by school, teacher, subgroup, and student to identify areas of celebration and those requiring additional targeted supports or adjustments to the systems of support we already have in place. Next steps also include thoughtful implementation plans for the Danielson Framework that we've just adopted this year, rolling out next year, new curriculum resources in ELA and Science, thoughtful implementation plans of those as well, and the innovation tools, or intervention tools that will provide additional diagnostic and progress monitoring data, progress monitoring data moving forward. Continued focus on the recommendations from MTSSA and B teams, our CIP plans, and getting into classrooms to promote and monitor key areas that were identified in Cognia last year in our walkthrough tool, also important, and working alongside our governing board to make adjustments to the KPIs for the year ahead, anticipated at the August Board Meeting. And finally, as a wrap-up, we've had this mentioned, I think, twice this evening already in Dr. Menzel's opening comments, but we wanted to make sure that we did an invitation or gave an invitation to partner with our families to extend learning beyond the school day because we know that makes a positive impact throughout and beyond the school year. While summer school is underway, wanted to invite all of our families that have not already had an opportunity to check out the rich opportunities and extended in our summer school SUSD enrichment link on our main website. And I think it's in the source this month too, that we also had that highlighted. Shout out to our teaching and learning team members for the work behind this enrichment site. I'm going to see if I can click on it here just so you can take a look. It is robust, engaging, and, tech team, can you help me scroll down on this? Or can I do it from here? There we go. And includes activities, enrichment activities, all the way through high school. So they're fantastic. Would invite our families to check it out and partner with us to extend students' learning across the summer. With that, I just wanted to give a shout out to all contributing to this agenda item. It's big. It's reflective of the work across the year, across teams. And we'd be happy at this time to take your feedback and your questions. Thank you, Dr. Benson. Board members, Ms. Sinowski.
Thank you, Board President Hartwells. I have some, can I just run through my list?
Certainly.
Okay, good. Thank you for sharing the outcomes of these KPIs, these key performance indicators that we work on kindergarten through 12th grade for student success. Where are we right now in the improvement cycle? Like, do we have some very key targets based on this information and other information that's not included here? That's going to focus the work on the campus, every campus? Can you explain that a little bit? I'm kind of giving you a softball here.
I appreciate the question, Board Member Sinowski. So kind of at root or the anchor of our continuous improvement efforts are the school-based CIP plans or continuous improvement plans where we identify goals and we align it to our strategic plan. So that is a huge piece of the conversations. We've just reviewed at our last Admin Academy and meeting, we talked through successes and challenges of our plans, and we're getting ready to launch that new work at the July Admin Academy. So we ground all of this with our site leaders and our district leaders in the continuous improvement plans where they write goals specific to our KPIs and include KPIs in their school-wide goals as well.
I appreciate you bringing in the, into this conversation that we do have continuous improvement plans in our district, and they are, they, they're live, they're live pieces of work, if you will, and they change as the students' needs indicate. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's progress monitoring throughout the year in our continuous improvement plans too, and time embedded in our admin agendas to reflect and share what's working, what's not, walkthrough data, those pieces as well.
Thank you. There was a question or some sentiment made about the 24-minute advisory period to provide more direct instruction and support for students. Where is that time coming from in the typical school day?
And I'm going to invite Dr. Dodd's Karen to pop up. There are multiple schedules and there's autonomy that is allowed for some of this too. So I'm going to have her speak to that.
Board Member Sinowski, members of the board. Many of our schools already had a period within their school day that was used for silent reading or just kind of a comeback from lunchtime and gather ourselves, or maybe even at the start of the day when they were noticing that kids were coming a little bit late. So we worked with our administrators to think differently about that time. So how could we maximize the time for targeted instruction compared to time for silent reading? Existing time is the answer.
That's what I was just going to say. So it's existing time, right? Thank you. The, there was conversation about the MTSS be included in monthly meetings at the sites. Is that on the early release professional development time? Is that when that takes place?
So each of our campuses has those MTSSB Tier One and Tier Two meetings. So it's a group of teachers and administrators that are on those committees. They happen before school, after school, but not necessarily during those half-days or early release days, sorry.
So is it off-contract time for employees?
It could be, yes.
Thank you. Okay, this, you know, huge kudos to everyone on the team that was involved in putting all this information together. I'm going to just say right now, it's very clear, students are not just our test scores. I'm going to throw a question out and maybe it doesn't need an answer right now. I'm not asking, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, Dr. Menzel. But we've had continuously, we hear from consistent individuals that want to share that our students are failing. And I really would like to know, when you guys go back into your workplace, this is for all the teachers and support staff and administrators out there, maybe, when they go back into their workplace and they hear a member of our community when they go back into their workplace and they hear a member of our community, whether direct or indirect, state over and over again what failures we are in this SUSD. What do they do with that information? Does it motivate them? How does it make them feel? I get very concerned about this mantra that we're failing, yet I can see over time the improvements that we have made as a district and how it's impacting our kids in spite of times during a worldwide health pandemic and teachers just having to teach on the fly and figure things out from one day to the next. Like, I understand all the work that goes into this. I'm concerned about how those comments during public comment or other saying that we're failing. I see the data. It's not perfect, but I don't think anyone here is satisfied with ever a status quo level of performance for us. So again, let's, I think it's more of a rhetorical question, but I think it needed to be said here after seeing all the work that goes into this to determine what's next, what's better because kids.
Are you finished, Ms. Sinowski? Any other comments from board members? Ms. Carney.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells. And I, too, would like to thank everyone for all your efforts and hard work into this. I just have to say that I was, was and am super disappointed when I opened up these academic, you know, these academic KPIs and saw that we did not meet the goals. And I just feel like, as a board, a year ago, we talked about how math has got to be a priority. And to see the scores fall is super disheartening. And I just think we have got to rein things in and really focus on our kids' academic achievement and start at the basics. I'm just very disappointed to see that and look forward to further conversation of how we are going to improve this because we do have a problem and it needs to be addressed. I would like to have, I do have a couple of questions for Dr. Wilson, if I could ask you. Are we doing anything to partner with local universities to pull in sped, like, student teachers or to try and get local university students to come in and that hopefully they can continue to work in our district? What are we doing for our special education program?
Certainly, we are partnered with both, well, with ASU and NAU. And additionally, Dr. Lugo is leading a charge right now with another organization to try to get some things in place to support folks that want to become special ed. This is obviously a national crisis, but I can say that, you know, we're definitely in better shape than other districts, but I, there is a shortage of folks that are attending the universities. Their enrollment for some of the teaching programs are also down. So we do have good relationships with the universities and continue to do what we can. But it's a highly competitive endeavor with other school districts that are actually in more dire straits than we are. But we will continue to beat that drum.
Okay. Do you have numbers on how many students you've pulled in as far as for student teaching or that have come from the universities to?
I can get you that information.
Yeah, if you could get that information and let us know, you know, currently what's been going on and then what our plan is for the next school year, that'd be great. And then lastly, I had asked for the employee turnover rates for '22, '23 to piggyback on the data that we'd received from the HR audit, and I have not received that yet, and would like the '23, '24 as well, so we can see the turnover over time.
As we complete the end of the school year and we're gathering data out of the system, we will be happy to share that information with you. It is definitely looking more positive.
Okay, and the '22, '23?
Yes.
You'll be sending, okay, thank you.
Can I respond? Can I respond to the first question that, the questions about what we're doing for math and where we landed? I think it's really important, we talked, Dr. Menzel and I talked about this, in looking at the comparison scores, again, we want to be respectful because it's not finalized data. But we are outperforming even those that have, are from our peer districts with all but two reporting, and those two typically we outperform. We're first in third, first in fourth, first in fifth, first in sixth in ELA, tied at seventh, and in the top three within a number or two in eighth in math. Even with the scores that you're looking at, we're first in third, first in fifth, first in sixth, first in seventh, tied at eighth. So there is a lot to unpack with scores this year. We added tutoring services. We had additional ESAR specialists at work this year. There is not a direct correlation to the supports that we provided, like an additional tutoring and student learning results. There's a lot to peel back. So there was a concerted effort and a coordinated effort and an attention on both ELA and math and all of our content areas, but specific targeted supports. And we need to have further conversation classroom by classroom, student by student, cohort by cohort, before we can really wrap our arms around the state testing scores and how we fared in it. So I appreciate the question, but I want to make sure the persons know there has been response, and this is the most atypical I've ever seen in terms of a correlation to what we know works. We've had, you know, governing board encouragement to add tutoring services, and so we did that, not just with our own teachers, although there was a significant chunk of our own teachers doing that, but with outside services, full-time tutors all day long at some of our campuses. And so just wanted to make sure persons heard that. I think we have, as colleagues have been having these conversations in districts across the valley, we've got a lot more to unpack and peel back before we can understand our student learning data across the state, and people are committed to do so, to do right by kids. It's a good question, and I appreciate it being posed.
Ms. Warner?
So you kind of touched on my question in your answer to Mrs. Carney. However, I'm not a particular fan of the comparison and trying to justify the result into, well, we're better than the person next door because that doesn't actually help our kids. So when I set a goal and I miss it, I'm going to take a look at what's missing. Where did we go wrong? So in your assessment of we declined as opposed to staying the same or increasing and meeting our goals, so what do you think is missing or not happening so that our kids aren't learning? Part of my question. The second thing is, you mentioned earlier that there's a teacher who always scores particularly high on the testing that she does in the classroom. Is there a way to take, to find out what is she, what is she doing? And is there best practices that she's using and having success with that we can then translate to the other classrooms, you know, in that grade? So that we can actually meet the goals and not just be in decline or stay the same and then have to make ourselves feel better when we compare ourselves to other districts?
I think I would disrupt the word justify and use the word contextualize instead. I think it's really important to, every time we have a data conversation, to be thinking about what our context is. So appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. Two things, yes, when we have collaborative, we encourage collaboration across our teams and reviewing of data. And when teachers are having some success, to be sharing that, what it might look like, to be even checking out each other's classrooms, getting into each other's classrooms to watch and observe and learn from one another. We know that to be an impactful learning experience for teachers. So yes, to that part. When you ask the question about what do we think is learning or what is missing, we have at K-5 not just had one resource or tool, but you might remember that our tool that we had initially identified in ESAR dropped off a co-op, so we did an RFP, and we ended up with four resources. It's difficult to navigate that, and so I think reducing it. We use the ESAR guidance to determine which is best and which we could use ESAR dollars to pay for moving forward, which is where we came up with iXL after looking at our data and looking at our budget. It will allow for diagnostic information and teachers to have real-time access. It changes as soon as a student's mastered a standard, so it doesn't, there's no delay in that. So I believe that that will help, real-time data, diagnostic, and low teacher prep, so it's easier for our teachers to use. And that's on, actually, as part of the supplemental process or supplemental Agenda Ida coming up in a few minutes. There's been a request by our 612 teachers. We've not ever had one. So for them to have access to real-time diagnostic data and a resource that doesn't require teacher prep on their part for ELA or math, I believe that will be very helpful to SUSD and the students and teachers as well, moving forward.
Okay, one last question. When it comes to math specifically, how much are these lower grades using pen and pencil and paper versus on the computer?
I don't know that I would be equipped to give a percentage. Dr. Dodds-Karney, you want to join me?
Board Member Warner, our big idea is math curriculum for K-5 or Saxon at Cheyenne is a typical textbook curriculum. The use of iReady or if it had been EdMenum or iExcel would have been a Tier Two support that would not be to exceed more than, you know, 30 minutes, let's say, in a given few days. So our teachers do utilize the manipulatives, do have kids using pencil and paper. Our teachers have been engaged in book studies for the past two years. It's a phenomenon right now by Peter Lilietal, Building Thinking Classrooms, about getting kids up and moving and working on vertical, non-permanent surfaces. So we keep talking about the pandemic, but with the pandemic, we worked with Dennis Rayler and his team. We had a lot of those clear protectors that divided kids. Well, those clear protectors have all been repurposed. They are no longer in a storage room, thank you, Dennis. And they have been put back into classrooms as vertical, non-permanent surfaces where kids can use expo markers on them, so they become kind of like a translucent whiteboard. So the majority of their instructional time for math is kids exploring the concept and transferring the concept to application.
Thank you.
All right, I also would like to thank all of you, every one of you who have contributed to the presentation, to all of the work, clearly an enormous amount of work, focused work. And I appreciate that, and I do think that the kids were at the center of all of that work, which of course is our goal, right, because of kids. So I would also invite board members to follow up with questions in writing as you digest what I think was an extremely broad-scoped and deep presentation and caution that you not react, but you look at the context. There are some discerning data points, and there are some positive, silver lining. But the context is very important, and we all have the emotional maturity to apply context to our analysis. With that, we are going to take a five-minute recess. By our break, we will return at 8:55.
Thank you, team.
Good evening, President Hartwells, members of the governing board, Dr. Menzel and Gladys. We're very excited to be here tonight to present our annual update on the SUSD Wellness Committee. Before we move forward on the update, I did want to take this moment to recognize and Before we move forward on the update, I did want to take this moment to recognize and thank our committee members. We have both staff and many parents on our committee, and they've worked tirelessly over the last several years on the Wellness Committee, and will continue to do so in the upcoming years. So I'd like to give a shout out to all these people on the screen up here, and if you see them, thank them for us. As a Wellness Committee, we are guided by Governing Board Policy JL and Governing Board Regulation JLR. These documents can be accessed through the Governing Board link on the SUSD website as well as on the Indian Nutrition Services webpage. So it's a little easier to go to Nutrition Services and find it. We'd like to do a review of the goals we had for our committee, and we'll highlight a few here. First goal, and probably our foremost goal, was that the Wellness Committee wanted to collaborate with the University of Arizona Maricopa County Cooperative Extension on a formal assessment that we would complete by the end of this school year. The staff also completed a revised Wellness Fundamental by May, and that we continue to monitor physical activity in recess to make sure that all students had equal access to this activity. As a Wellness Committee, there's many topics we review, and they all align with the coordinated school health model. First and foremost, we do look at Governing Board Policy and Regulation, as well as district wellness guidelines to ensure that we are up to date and that they are all relevant. We also look at several areas of the district, for example, Nutrition Services, Staff Wellness, and Health Services. So the major focus for this year was the WellSat 3.0. Sounds exciting, doesn't it? It is the tool that was chosen by the committee to assess, score, and improve the local wellness policy. It's a collaborative assessment, and it embraces all site leaders and departments as well. There are six required assessment topics, and you'll see them listed there. And when we work with the University of Arizona, what we're going to see at the end of this, we've already turned in our data. They will assess the data and give us our inaugural baseline data, which I think is really important because with that, we're going to get an official scorecard, which will help the committee be laser focused on the areas we need to look at in not just next year, but the upcoming years. And each year, we will be doing this assessment and seeing where we stand and where our improvements are. And what would be a wellness presentation without talking about the exciting Blue Zones Project Scottsdale, something I'm super passionate about? Our local wellness policy aligns with all of these Blue Zones initiatives and principles, so it's just right for our district to partner with that. It's a collaborative effort amongst citywide stakeholders, and there's multiple subcommittees. For example, Mrs. Cron serves on the Public Policy Committee, and I serve on the Schools Committee with a few of our Wellness Committee members and with Dr. Hartwells. I wanted to share that SUSD proudly announces that Echo Canyon is the first school in Arizona. Now, read that, first school in Arizona, not Scottsdale, first school in Arizona to earn Blue Zones approval. So we're super proud of that, and Anasazi and Copper Ridge have both registered to have interest in such an approval. Now, there's two fun facts I'm going to add right here. So coming to a cafeteria soon near you is Blue Zones. Right now, we are actively working on recipe development in Nutrition Services. Today, I got to taste a whole bunch of fun stuff, and we will be bringing Blue Zones entrees and sides to all of our SUSD campuses starting next school year. So it won't just be the students in these three schools that get to benefit from Blue Zones. It'll be students at all SUSD schools. Another fun fact that I just learned is that our newly adopted environmental science curriculum actually has a chapter on Blue Zones. Isn't that exciting? So here, the academic curriculum that our students are going to receive are going to help them thrive and grow as they move into adulthood. I'm also going to invite Mrs. Cron up here to talk to you a little bit on supporting student mental health.
All right, absolutely. So the committee recognizes that mental health has a significant impact on all areas of wellness. And so this is something where it's not governed by the Wellness Committee, but it is a topic that we talk about and that we consider. So I just wanted to share again with you our approach to supporting students' mental health. And so we really take that comprehensive support by looking at those different tiers. And in the schools, our focus is really on prevention and early intervention. So looking at how can we remove barriers to support students so that they're able to really access their education when they're on campus? We know that, this is kind of scary, that from the first onset of mental health symptoms, on average, it takes a student or a person 11 years to be able to get the support that they need. And so since we see students every day, we want to recognize when we see changes in behavior or students displaying that onset of symptoms. Work with our families to make sure that we're able to connect them to specialized care in the community. So again, it's really that tiered system of support. During the school day, we provide students with zendens, our quiet spaces, for them to be able to learn how to regulate emotions, process feelings. We do have teams that are trained to provide crisis response. So should we have a crisis on our campus, we are able to respond and support students, help remove those barriers so that they're able to, again, process feelings, process feelings, get the help that they need, and then be able to, again, return to the classroom and access academics. We provide training to our staff through professional development, looking at that trauma-informed care, crisis intervention, and a variety of mental health topics. So just this last week, we were able to provide training on substance abuse awareness, signs and symptoms. We also talked a lot about recognizing different behaviors, managing those behaviors, supporting those behaviors in the classroom. And then, of course, we really try to partner with parents and community members. So supporting parents with understanding the needs of their own children through those community awareness presentations, making sure that at those community awareness presentations, we've got different organizations that are able to meet with parents, provide information on services that they can access in the community. And then we also provide families with those referral guides and just so they are able to find those meaningful services to support their students and their mental health needs.
Thanks, Shannon. And so what are our next steps? As we move forward into the new school year, obviously, the WellSat 3.0 is very important to us because that baseline data and that scorecard is what's going to drive the committee from here forward. I feel like it's going to give us focus, and it's going to give us the areas we need to actually work to create the biggest impact for our students. We have set our four meeting dates for the school year now, so those will be up on the website. And we will have additional committee or subcommittee dates as needed on an ongoing basis. We are excited to collaborate with the SUSD Employee Wellness Team. They kind of sound alike. They're different, but we also have very shared visions and goals. So I think that we can help each other and create just a better overall work environment for our staff here at Scottsdale. We also, this is important, we want to continue to seek student representatives from all learning communities, as we have none right now, as well as parent representation from the Coronado Lunar community. I think with the WellSat 3.0 in place and that data there, we will be results-driven with the goal of continuous improvement. So we tried to make this quick for you on a long night, but with that, we will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Billbury, Ms. Cron, board members. Any questions or comments? Ms. Sinowski.
Thank you, Board President Hartwells. You mentioned the Blue Zone approval process, and you also stated that both Anasazi and Copper Ridge had registered their interest. What does, a couple of things, what does that mean, registering their interest with who, right? And then what is that approval process for Blue Zones?
So not being Blue Zones, but I can speak a little bit too because we spoke about it in our schools meeting recently. So they would register with the actual Blue Zones Project Scottsdale as having an interest. They would then meet with their school's team and look at it. They have an assessment, much like the WellSat 3.0. They would go through different areas to find out what they're already doing on campus, what they could be doing, what they see their future as, is meeting these Blue Zones objectives. They don't have to meet everyone, but like when Echo Canyon went through their approval process, there was even a whole food service area that she, Principal Hughes, worked with to find out what are we doing in our cafeterias, what are we not doing? I mean, she knew some things, but not the behind the scenes. She worked with her physical education coaches. She worked with curriculum, what were they doing to meet these Blue Zones goals? And then once they meet a certain percentage of tenants in those goals, they can meet that certification. It doesn't mean that they don't have continuous improvement and keep working to check off all those boxes, but it's a significant amount of work, but it's surprising how much we already do in our schools and how exciting it was and how engaged, I think, the kids were when they found out that they were Blue Zones approved. It was really exciting.
Thank you. Dr. Menzel, what would be keeping our other campuses from registering their interest in becoming Blue Zone-approved?
The time necessary to fill out the application form. So as more principals go through the process, they can share with their colleagues how much time it took, how to make sure that you can streamline that process. And to Patty's point, many of our schools are already well on the way. So it's not a really heavy lift. It's about just making sure they understand. And when principals talk to other principals, I think you'll see a snowball effect.
Thank you. Is the same Wellness Committee that's in place and came up with all this good information, are they going to also be the group that's in place at the 24-25 school year? Or will this committee change?
As far as I know, everybody wants to continue. We also are looking for additional folks from that Coronado Lunar community and the student representatives.
I heard that, I was just wondering about the other representatives.
But yes, they plan on continuing on.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thanks.
Anybody else? Ms. Carney.
Thank you. I just have a question. Does the committee follow open meeting law, or are your meetings open to the public?
Yes, they are. We are, I believe it's a board set committee instead of a superintendent set committee, and we do follow open meeting law. We have our documents placed on the Committee Hub, and we will place them in like a draft agenda well in advance. I think it's 72 hours in advance. We'll put it on the Committee Hub, and we'll also place our minutes and any pertinent documents there. And all the community can attend.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Carney, are you finished? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we are moving on to our last information discussion item 7G, SUSD Transportation and Contracted Services Update, including Special Education. Mr. Jacobson and Ms. Crozier.
Thank you. I think I'm up here for a while tonight with the next few items. So good evening, Board President Hartwells, members of the board, Dr. Menzel and guests. Tonight, we felt it was important to take a look at transportation, what we've been doing in transportation, and just really how the driver shortage has affected transportation and the needs that we are now occurring within that. So to look at that, we need to look at what historically has really gone in within the transportation and our driver shortage. So in fiscal year 1718, we had over 139 drivers. When you look at what we currently have is 58 drivers, you can see we've really cut that, you know, more than half of what we had just a few years ago within drivers. To be able to eliminate the contract services, which is always our goal and what we want to achieve, would mean that we'd have to be hiring somewhere between 55 and 60 drivers. We hired 12 this year. That is, I think, the most we have done in several years. We are super excited about hiring 12 and feel like we've made good progress. However, bus drivers sometimes seem to already be the retired folks in the community, and so they also have been retiring as well. So even though we hired 12, we had nine retire or resign, realize that bus driving maybe isn't their forte. So still had a little bit, but a little disheartening to only really pick up three from those 12. Our staff, a lot of the times outside of our drivers, our office staff, Mr. Jacobson, his supervisors, mechanics are often out driving those routes because we do have two unassigned routes. And then if anybody is off sick, has something come up, then that's an additional staff, that we've got to have somebody out there or double up routes. So we've been doing that this year, but unfortunately, when they're doing that, that means that they're not getting to do their normal job because unfortunately, they are driving the bus. We have taken a lot of steps since this really started to become an issue for us really during the pandemic in 2020, 2021. We tried to take a lot of steps to look at what are we doing? How does our pay compare with other neighboring districts? We looked at contract signing incentives. We did referral incentives. We did bonuses. We do driver longevity incentives. We've done a couple of drive-in signs. We did a great one last spring. Gibby from Channel 3 was out, drove the bus. And I mean, the amount of applications that came in through that and excitement about that was huge. So we continue to do those. We've done job fairs. We've increased the salary. We're pretty competitive with our neighboring districts on what we're paying our bus drivers, and in some cases, a little bit more. This, David was sharing this with me. Their drivers are taking flyers to church and putting them on the car windows and talking at the events that they go to, and the soccer games that they're at and the kid's sports events, trying to just drive up any interest they can to get people to be excited or be interested in driving a bus. And then the last thing is we're constantly posting on our website that we're hiring drivers. We've got that out there. We've told people, you don't even need to have experience. We'll teach you how to drive the bus. We'll help you get that CDL license. We'll help you get the endorsement that you need to be able to drive the bus. So really, we're trying to get the word out there. I drove the bus at one of the drive-in sign events. I'm not going to be a bus driver, not going to lie. That's not going to be in my forte. Dr. Menzel's laughing because he's seen me park my car before. But it's not as bad as you think. It's not as hard to drive the bus as you would think. So lots of opportunities out there for bus drivers, if anybody is interested in that role. What is required from the district when it comes to transportation? So there's kind of two things we have to look at. The first one is for regular education students. Our policy on that is that a common school, so that's going to be your elementary and middle schools, you need to reside within the district, within the school attendance area, and be no more than one mile from that school. For a high school student, it's going to be living more than one and a half miles from the school. In addition to that, we also are cognizant that we don't want kids crossing necessarily Shea or Hayden or some of those major intersections. So when we're looking at our routes, we're taking into effect what is the resident area, how far is it? But also making sure that we're not putting a kindergartner who's going to be crossing, or a first grader who's going to be crossing a major intersection that wouldn't be safe. When it comes to special education and McKinney-Vento, special education is based off of what's in their IEP. So if when we're meeting, the special ed team is meeting with a family, and it becomes evident that that's something that the student needs to be able to have the proper services, that gets written into the IEP, we then have to transport. And when we're transporting, that's a door-to-door pickup. We're picking them up at their front door, we're taking them to the school, and vice versa. With McKinney-Vento Act, that requires us also to transfer the student to their new home address. It could be one way. We could be working that out with the other district that they're now in. Or it could be both ways. It just kind of depends on the situation. But to put into perspective of what that looks like, we have students that we could be transporting as far as Maricopa and Buckeye. So they're really, they could be in a service with us for close to an hour each way, depending on where the school is, which unfortunately is a long time to be able to be trying to get to school and home. Obviously, our first preferred method of transporting kids is always going to be transportation, our own SUSD transportation bus service. Unfortunately, like I said, with our driver shortage, we are not able to do that. And so we have contracted with a couple of services. There's actually four that we have, this current year had authorization to use. We've only used three of them. They've been the three more preferred. Comtrans right now has been transporting, as of this year, 142 students. Unfortunately, Comtrans earlier this year made the decision to stop providing that service and is no longer a business. We were fortunate, originally, we were told in December that they were going to be closing their doors in June, or I'm sorry, in January. We cringed, worked with them, had a lot of conversations, and they were able to provide that service through the end of the school year. That is no longer a service that they're providing. So we're currently looking at how do we, where can we move those 142 students? We have 58 on Care Transit. We have had a lot of conversations with Care Transit on how can we get more students with you? How can we get more on? How can we get more on? Because ComTrans and Care Transit are van service, which is, if we can't do it ourselves, we like the van service. Unfortunately, again, though we've had those conversations, they haven't been able to take on more of our students. One of the conversations that David has been having this year with ComTrans going out of business is multiples, but trying to connect the folks from ComTrans and Care Transit to see how can we, how can we find jobs for those people who are now without one, working with ComTrans? You know, we've met with them, would your drivers like to come over to our district and become bus drivers? Wasn't very successful with that. But Care Transit did just hire a, I believe it was a general manager from ComTrans. So we've been working with them to see, you know, can, how can we help you facilitate to get more of those employees over to Care Transit? And then David indicated there's also some more conversations happening with them about really looking at service, how can we get more of our kids on that service? So we're having a lot of conversations about that. And then the last one that we've been using is HopSkip Drive. There is 124 students on that service. Most of those are McKinny-Vento students with them. So we know that's the other, the other company we've looked at. We have looked at, like I said, with Care Transit and Com Transit, what can we do to get those connected to maybe get some more drivers or some more students connected with Care Transit, get more kids on those routes? We've been talking quite a bit with SPED on how do we even address the rising costs within SPED Special Education and the contracted services? We've talked about, you know, are there students who maybe have an IEP, but they're just about ready or they're ready to move back onto the big bus and, you know, go more so with the group bus back and maybe put a para on the bus so that there's another adult there that can maybe help make that transition a little bit easier? We're willing to do that. I think we have done, I know we've done that in the past. The indications is it wasn't super successful. We only had one person who was willing to do that. But it's definitely something that we're looking at again as to what can we do to cut down those contracted services, get those kids off of the providers that we have and deal with those. But we're just faced with, like everybody else, and that's the issue we're running into with our vendors, is every district in the valley is competing for that same service and with those same drivers, and they have the same problem we have. There's just a driver shortage and they're having trouble getting drivers as well. So there's just a lot of competition with few options. We do have, one of the things that we have on the agenda for tonight is ever-driven, who you do not see here. We have used them in the past. We have not used them this year. My understanding is that they do have some new staff in there, some new leadership in there, so we're excited about that possibility. But we are looking at it going, we've got a lot of kids that we've got to figure out how to get transported and how to provide those services and how can we do that in the best, in the best manner? With our contracted services, the safety measures for each vendor, and this is beyond just even transportation, is that they are required to do a background check as well as a fingerprint clearance. We know that there are some providers that go above and beyond that and do more than that, but that is kind of the base level of what is, what is required for that. And it meets in line with what we as a district do as well. With that, I'm going to invite HopSkip Drive up. They are one of the vendors that we are looking at tonight and wanted to have them talk about what their safety measures are and how they're continually improving those safety measures.
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to let us share a little bit about HopSkip Drive with you. I know it's getting late, and so I really appreciate that. I want to introduce myself. My name is Michelle McCombs. I'm the Vice President of Safety at HopSkip Drive. And so all of our safety program has been developed in partnership with our senior leadership team and myself. I've brought a few of my coworkers and colleagues along. Mike Hernandez, he's our Director of Trust and Safety. He works with me to ensure that we have the correct response when there is an incident. Saad Shazad, who is Head of our Client Partnerships. He's one of our Senior Vice Presidents. And Katie Dafini, who's our Senior Policy Manager and a Scottsdale United alumni. So very excited to have her here too as well, and I appreciate the time. I want to start with just a little bit about HopSkip Drive. We were founded by three working moms who were trying to solve their own transportation solution. They wanted to find a safe way to get their kids where they needed to be when they weren't always able to, to make sure that their kids had the same opportunities that other kids could have. And we've taken that philosophy and turned that into a solution for schools, government entities, parents, anyone looking to help transport kids safely. One of our founders is still our CEO today, Joanna McFarlane, and we also have a large leadership team who has over 50 years' experience in technology, education, and safety. We have a lot of people here. We're in charge of about 350 employees who are all working to make sure HopSkip Drive is a safe, reliable transportation solution. Just wanted to go a little bit about our history. HopSkip Drive has been open for over 10 years, and in that time, we've driven 61 million miles and supported over 10,000 schools, helping them get students to where they need to go. We have a very dedicated care driver community. That's what we call the drivers on our platform. We're care drivers because we require at least five years caregiving experience. But as you can see, it's over 10 years of caregiving experience on our platform. And we had decided that important thing was to mirror our technology and our people focus. And so we have telematics that tell us about driver behaviors, that have GPS tracking of our drivers so that we know what's going on and we can give them feedback. We can monitor that behavior and we can also have our Safe Ride Support Team intervene and work with them in real time to make sure everyone's safe in a ride. With our safety program that I've developed, I have put together four core pillars that we use to kind of really focus our safety program. The first is platform access. Who gets to be on our platform and stay on our platform? Next is interpersonal use safety. How do we ensure that we are safely transporting very vulnerable populations? Road safety, we want to make sure our drivers are the safest on the road. And then a very important pillar for me is this continuous improvement. I heard it here with other presentations as well. It's a key for you all as well is how do we continue to evolve and improve our program and make sure it's never done and that we're continuing to stay up to date on technology and process and everything that could change to make sure that we're doing what we can to keep our riders safe? On the subject of platform access, I want to tell you a little bit about our care driver standards. We have a 15-point certification process, which I'll go into in just a minute on our next slide, where we require drivers to meet every one of those 15 points before they can access any sort of rides on our platform. We do a live onboarding. We want to meet every driver. We think that's really important to meet who's going to be driving these students. Like I said, we require at least five years caregiving experience, two specifically with children, and we make sure that they have a safe vehicle. It has an annual inspection. It has to be newer than 13 years old, and we make sure that these are people that we trust our own families with. It's like I said, 15-point certification process. I wanted to get in a little bit about some of those background checks that we do. I think it's very important. You know, we do a lot of record checks. We do name-based searches that check the social security number against anything in any government databases, a global watch list check, a sexual violation check. We do a criminal history check, and then we make sure they're fingerprinted to the IDP card level, like teachers, bus drivers here at Scottsdale. And with that, they're checking Arizona history, they're checking county history, they're checking FBI. And we do that in collaboration with the Department of Public Safety here in Arizona to make sure that they're approving these people and saying these background checks are great. Additionally, we do child abuse and neglect scans with the Department of Child Safety. That's something that we really want to make sure we're doing, an additional check to make sure that there's no flags on these drivers through the Department of Child Safety. So what this means is, you know, we have only about 14% of people who sign up to be a care driver actually get on our platform and be allowed to drive students. We have a long process, and we do that on purpose to make sure that we're weeding out people and getting the right people who want to be part of this program and help students in their communities. Another thing that was really critical for us is to have a team that's available anytime there's a ride active on our platform. That's our Safe Ride Support Team. At any point, someone can call or text that team and they'll be able to respond quickly to anything that anyone may need, from simple things like a driver having a rider behavior issue and wants to know, how do I help de-escalate the student that's having a hard time to, you know, I'm at this big school, I can't find where the entrance is. How do I find this student? That team's always available to help out. And we also have a system of proprietary alerts that warn that team, hey, we should get extra eyes on this ride just in case to make sure anything that could go wrong, we can intervene with. We also provide the district and parents access to information about the driver, their car, and their GPS location whenever there are students in the vehicle. I want to share a little bit about our history here in Arizona. It was really exciting in 2019 when we launched here in Arizona and started building partnerships here. As you can see, we've really grown in the Phoenix area. We're working with over 70% of the school districts here, and we've helped over 5,000 riders get where they need to go and really, really proud of those partnerships and that trust that we've built with the community here. A little bit more about working with Scottsdale. You know, we began working together in April in 2022. At that time, since then, we've helped, we've offered 20,000 rides on the platform and helped over 275 students get where they need to go. What's really great about our platform is that we, we're as needed, we're supplemental. And so, you know, we're here to help support the transportation department when they need to move a student quickly or, you know, we see a lot of use cases where maybe a student is in the foster system and they get moved to another placement at 10:00 PM that night. You know, the transportation team can go in and quickly reroute our driver the next morning, is showing up at the new address, ready to go. That's something we really are proud of, and that's opportunities that we see our system is very unique in. And I want to just read this quote from this Scottsdale parent. We have, parents are able to rate the drivers they have. You can see this school year, all the drivers received a 2.95 out of three stars in total. And our team does review any of those negative reviews to make sure this driver still could be a fit for our platform or not. But what I love about it is just seeing how much drivers put in to making these rides enjoyable for the kids, right? So you can see the very nice personality in early. I love the fact that she talked to my son, and it wasn't a quiet ride. When I asked my son what she liked most about her, his response is she talked to him. You know, thank you, Shamika, for your effort in making this ride enjoyable. That's what's great about our driver population is it's members of the community who want to be part of the community and help out. And so we get to hear stories like this all the time of where drivers and riders are helping each other and supporting each other. You know, we have many teams dedicated to the HopSkip Drive community outlining it all here, and also we work very closely with the transportation department, and we now have multiple points of contact when there are issues arise. So we can make sure that there's not a delay in notification or reaction. You know, they have multiple points of contact with us, and we have multiple points of contact with them to make sure that we can react quickly and well to any situation that may This is a very long timeline. I'm not going to go into detail on all of it. Just want to highlight a few things. We require GPS and telematics in our software since the very beginning. It was, again, those moms that founded our company, they said, what do I need to make sure that I feel safe putting my kid in these cars? And that was one of the key things. Another thing that we're really proud of is that we are published, we are the only that person we know of in the student transportation industry that publishes our safety data. You can see there, we had started, we've had our first report published in 2020. It was for the 2018, 2019 year, and we have 99.6, 99.7% of rides end without any sort of safety incident whatsoever. We consider safety incidents to be very broad subject, and so most of those are situations where maybe a driver and rider aren't able to connect, and so the rider doesn't get to school on time and we have to send a new driver. It's very minor things like that, but we consider it a safety issue and put it into that report. And we are constantly working to improve and continue to improve those numbers. But also is very, you know, that we're very proud of is that we've been growing a lot. We've been working with a lot of different schools. We've been going to new areas and expanding, and we continue to keep that safety record. You know, the number of rides we did in 2018, 2019, we're at like four or five X of what we are doing now, and we have the same safety percentage. We're still seeing 99.7% of rides end without any sort of safety incident whatsoever. And then I wanted to just click in real quick on this year. You know, it's, as I said, it's never done. We have more, we have plans. So highlighting improvements to our app, making sure people know where they need to be and how they can do the rides successfully. And then we're going to include adding for this back to school, more robust parent notification and working closer with parents of these students to make sure they know what's going on in the vehicles. We're joining the industry sharing safety program, which is another opportunity to check a driver's background check. And finally, we want to offer in-vehicle recording and a focused rider emergency response in the 2024, 2025 school year for Scottsdale and for all of our school partners.
I want to add a couple of things that we have changed in our own processes through, you know, learning opportunities. When we, a couple of years back, when this first got started with us, we had notifications going to one individual. We now have any notification that happens. So if a care driver says, hey, this was happening on, in our car, they report that to us. It was going to one person. We now have that going to the entire team. So David, as well as his other supervisors and our routers are all receiving that information. Additionally, we have set that up so that parents will also receive that same notification. So we don't have a lapse of, you know, somebody being out or something just being missed with the influx of emails that come through, but we're making sure that that's always covered. And then the other thing we've talked quite a bit about, it's always been an option that we've had, but it's an option we want to make sure we're expanding and people are aware of, is that parents have the choice or caregivers have the choice to say, I only want a male driver. I only want a female driver. And making sure that they know that that is an option that they have moving forward. So that's a couple of things that we also wanted to make sure that, that we had in place, so parents have more options and more, just more knowledge of what's going on with their students while they're being transported. So with that, we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Carney?
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells. I kind of don't know where to begin, but I'm going to begin with the numbers first. On the slide, if you can go back to the contracted services in 2023, 24.
Yes.
Those numbers. In 2023, the board approved ComTrans not to exceed contract for $200,000. And the same, and we spent $570,000. In Care Transit, we, the board approved a not-to-exceed contract for $300,000, yet we spent $420,000. So my question is, who approved the overages? And how come the board doesn't, doesn't come back to the board for approval?
That's, thank you. So in reviewing what we have, what our processes have been, and having some new staff in our procurement department, realized that there were some things like that happening where an amount was sent. And part of the issue we run into is with multiple, with multiple service vendors, we're estimating what we think we're going to spend, but at the end of the day, we're trying to figure out, you know, if we can't get it from this driver, we've got to move it over to, to another vendor to be able to provide that service. So we're really guessing at who do we think is going to be able to provide the most? I think the year before that, we had more on Care Transit than we were able to get this year, so that plays into it as well. What we've identified is we need to do some process improvements in general when it comes to that. And the thought was that, we believe the thought from our, our previous procurement team was that these had been approved as co-ops, and so that those were estimated amounts, and not realizing that our practice has always been that we bring those back when we exceed those. So we have some process improvements that we know that we're already putting into place that we need to put in. One of those is looking at how we send that to the board. So instead of saying, we are going to spend X amount with this vendor, and X amount with this vendor, and X amount with this vendor, we want to look at it and say, this is a commodity that's, that's under a co-op with like GPPCS or SAVE. And we think between these three vendors or two vendors, however many vendors are with this co-op, we're going to spend $1 million versus saying, well, we think we'll spend 500 with this, and we think we'll spend 400 with this vendor. So we have a little bit more flexibility. The other thing we are doing is within our accounting system, we more flexibility. The other thing we are doing is within our accounting system, we are turning on the flag so that that, they will be notified that we're getting close to that threshold and we need to come back, we need to go back and look at what are we spending and how do we address that better. So we recognize that we had some process improvements on our side to do and have put those into place, realizing as well that we also have a new purchasing director and how we can better utilize what we're doing, being transparent, and also making sure that we don't go over those amounts.
Okay, because in this, this same meeting last year, a year ago, when we were approving these contracts, you, you did say to the board that these are not to exceed contracts. And so, I believed you when you said that. I, I have a question for the attorney. Can you, can you please provide us with the policy statute or the procurement rule showing what authority the superintendent has to spend in excess of board-approved not-to-exceed contracts?
I think that sounds like a trick question. I don't think there's a statute for that.
It's not a trick question.
And the governing board does have the authority to, you know, ultimately, that's why we're here, getting your authority to spend money. I think what Ms. Crozier just stated is, yeah, it probably should have come back to the board and maybe it could be ratified. But one thing that Ms. Crozier hasn't pointed out is that the special ed department, the finance department is in kind of a tricky situation where these children had to be transported and their IEPs require it. So definitely a process improvement. But to answer your question, there's no statute that permits that.
Okay, thank you. Then I just have a question. I'm not sure if this is, who this is for, but we're, were Care Transit and EverDriven asked to come and present? Did you give that offer to the other vendors as well to come present?
Excuse me, we did not with Care Transit as that had been already approved. We felt it was two-part important to have HopSkip here tonight. One is we had been asked to have a discussion about HopSkip Drive and the transportation services with it. But the other part is because we knew this was an agenda item for tonight and that there have been safety concerns brought forth. We wanted to give them the opportunity to talk about what they're doing and the services they provide and the safety measures they're taking.
Okay, because my concern is we're, we knew COM Trans was going away. A year ago, we discussed from, in the board meeting, our apprehension with continuing with HopSkip and Drive a year ago. And to be in this place now where we have no solution, we have no different solution, I'm, I'm very disappointed. We haven't spent time figuring out how in the world we are going to fill this gap. And Care Transit did send the board information a year ago saying that we are capable of accommodating more than six hundred students and that they are purchasing sedans to add to their fleet. There's a lot of information that we received that is not coherent or, you know, congruent with what we're hearing. And I just wish that we would have invited them to present as well so we could really get a handle on this. This is a problem.
Absolutely, and I agree. We have been this entire year looking at what are our other options. David has had numerous conversations with other vendors, vendors that we're currently using, as well as vendors that are looking at getting onto other co-ops. We have, I know he's spoken multiple times with Care Transit. I'm going to let him talk a little bit more about that. But it is a problem. We've been very concerned, how are we going to get these kids transported, especially knowing that COM Trans is going out of business? And what are we, what are we going to do? That has been an absolute concern that both David and I have had all year. And David has been reaching out to numerous different vendors to say, what's out there? What do we offer? One of the things we keep running into is the service that is, services that are offered out there are the car-share rides themselves. There's not much out there for van service, which, I mean, obviously is what we would like to do. They're just not out there. And then we're competing with every other district in the valley. I'm going to let you speak to what you personally have been doing on that, though.
Yeah, I've reached out to probably half a dozen companies. And some of them are doing just work with one school here in town and that's it. And they won't, they won't build their driver pool until they're successful at getting on a SAVE or a Mojave or somebody like that. And so, they don't have the driver pool to support and they are not wanting to build that until they have a commitment that they're going to get work from, for being, with being on a co-op. I did, just this evening, right before we came up, while Patty was giving her presentation, received a voicemail from the owner with Care Transit. He said it looks like he could commit to another fifty students is about all he could do for us next year. So that would bring him up to just over a hundred students. So I have been working endlessly with other companies and no one's willing to support the amount of students that we have to transport. Two of the companies even ghosted me. Met with them, told them yes. I even committed to getting directors from other districts together to show that, yes, there's work here. And then no return phone calls or emails. So that's where those, those ones ended too. I'm glad it's closed. So, but yeah, I've, I've made numerous, numerous calls and appointments and Zoom meetings and there's just no one out there willing to jump up.
Yeah, I, I understand it's difficult. I absolutely do that. We, we talked about this a year ago. And we know this, it is, but we have got to get creative. We've got to find real solutions and not just say, well, this is the best we can do. I mean, we're not even addressing the elephant in the room of having a student sexually assaulted in a vehicle less than two months ago in this vendor. And this is real. And our priority must be protecting our most vulnerable students. It, and we, I, I talked about this a year ago because I have personal experience with this vendor, with my own special ed vulnerable son taking it. So it is very real. And I have screenshot after screenshot of random men and people that I was never comfortable with putting my child in that car. But I, so I was able to advocate for different transportation and my, his teachers agree that teachers don't like this, right? It's, it's, it's a problem. And so, for us to just say, well, this is what we have and we're going to throw another hundred and fifty thousand to it is extremely disappointing and unexcusable to me. I'm going to finish up because I'm sure everyone else has things to say. I have concerns, and I've talked with you about this too, on the canceled trip, the cost of the canceled trips that we pay to HopSkip and Drive. We spent over sixty thousand dollars last year in canceled trips and no other vendor charges those. I don't know the information. I did see that you sent that through for twenty twenty-four. I didn't have the opportunity to look at that today. But it's very expensive, these canceled trips. And parents aren't being told, parents or guardians, how, any, any rules on, you know, when they should be canceling, how they cancel. So they don't, you know, and I think we talked about this, having better communication with that because it's costly.
I, I absolutely agree. I don't like spending money on something that we are not getting. That is incredibly frustrating to me as well. We talked, David and I talked about this a little bit this afternoon. It has moved to a two, that they need to cancel two hours beforehand. We keep communicating that out to parents. Unfortunately, that is what we get into sometimes is that parents don't, or caregivers for whatever reason, don't cancel. We'll, you know, we can, we can keep saying it and sharing and sharing and sharing. And obviously, that's something we can continue to work with, with our parents and with our, with our drivers. We, we don't like being on these services either. And if, if I knew of another way or if David and I knew, I mean, I don't like being in this situation either of saying, I, I don't know how to transport these, these students. I don't like us being in that situation either.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you. I think that's enough. Ms. Carney, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm just going to say one last thing. Have we discussed paying, paying the parents or guardians? I know some parents are receiving money to transport their child. Are we doing more of that?
We do have that as an option for parents. We've talked with some about having that option. It is something that we can continue to do and share. But that is, we do have some parents that, that's, that's the mode of transportation that, that works best for them. That, that is absolutely an option and we have no issue with doing that either.
Could we get numbers on that about how many parents are, or guardians or people are transporting?
You, you might know off the top of your head.
Students or what?
No, you don't. Okay. Yes, we will find out how many students are doing that.
And if we can increase that? I'd never heard of, like, that option being offered to me. I also never received any, anything on how I would cancel trips. So I'm not sure how that's being communicated, but.
Okay, we will work. I think that's something we can actually adjust as well through Parent Square with those who are on that service.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Warner?
Thank you. I have a lot to say, so brace yourselves. How, how big is the transportation budget, approximately? Is it about eight million?
I can tell you I have the budget actually with me.
I know you're doing it next. Getting a preview.
It's tiny. So, and my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. Eight-point-seven million.
Eight-point-seven million.
Yep.
And this is a core responsibility of the superintendent to manage and make sure that we have transportation. So what are we spending that eight-point-seven million dollars on?
FTE for the drivers, bus aids, contracted services, fuel, mechanics, the equipment needed for upkeep on not only our bus, but our, our district white fleet, routers, the staff that we need for the equipment, the software for our routing.
Okay. How much do the bus drivers make per hour?
Do you have that?
Approximately?
I'm sorry?
Twenty sixteen dollars.
Twenty dollars and sixteen cents, okay.
Yeah, that's a start.
Okay. It's not a lot, is it?
It's not. And we've increased it. That's the issue we run into with bus drivers is if you're in the private industry and you're, you have your CDL and can do trucking, you're going to make a whole lot more than we can even begin to offer.
Well, I think typically bus drivers, like you said, they're retired people and, you know, maybe a community engagement with community centers and even some of the churches where people are looking to do some extra work and who actually care about our community and the kids and offering some more money would be a solution. I, I have a question regarding HopSkip Drive and what the five years of caregiving experience looks like.
Yeah. So five years of caregiving experience tends to be, we, we, some of them are parents. We have nurses, we have retired teachers, we have retired school bus drivers. We, we have them tell us what they think their experience is and then we evaluate if we think that meets the five-year threshold or not. That's also part of our live onboarding conversation is to talk about what their experience is and how they worked with students, especially students with special needs or students experiencing homelessness or students within the foster system.
Thank you. That's all. So I had brought this on May thirteenth of twenty twenty-three that I had grave concerns about HopSkip Drive, particularly at that time, there were three incidents of physical abuse, January thirtieth, February fifteenth, and February seventeenth. I was surprised not to see that there was an RFP or massive action to get other sources considering we brought this to your attention last year in May. Additionally, while I tabled it the first time, I voted for it the next time because you said it was up to a certain amount and that you'd be using different sources. And I'm not saying you as in you're doing it, just so you know. So we'd be using other sources if we could because there was a problem with HopSkip Drive and the incidents in the vehicles and also kids being dropped off in the wrong location and so on. Then we had two incidents on September thirteenth and fourteenth with suspected inappropriate behavior with, again, a student being, you know, late by over an hour. They didn't know where that child was. Mom was upset, teachers were upset, and they believed that there was something that happened because the student went from the backseat to the front seat and so on. So to say that there was one incident is disingenuous because there have been seven since January of last year that we know about. It is, it is just gravely concerning. And, you know, every one of us on this dais have daughters. And I think most of the people here in this room have both daughters and sons. And, you know, we have to take that into consideration. And we are, we are here to protect our students. And on, I was actually going to save this for the actual action item, but on April fifteenth and April sixteenth.
Do you have a question, Ms. Warner? Would you like to comment? If you wish, you may.
Yeah. I agree. It's horrible. It's, it kept me up at night for nights. This is, this is what I live in. This is where I am. This is, you know, like you mentioned, I'm a parent myself and it is, is horrible. And it is, it is, is just, it's disgusting what happened. And I agree with you. And it is, you know, we, one thing about our continuous improvement that I really appreciate and why I can feel comfortable being at HopSkip Drive as the vice president of safety is that we sit down when we have an incident like that and talk about everything that could have gone better and how we can do better and how we can continue to make sure that that never happens again. There are bad people out there and we work really hard to keep them away from our platform. And we constantly are talking about what more can we do? How can we keep these vulnerable students safe? It is, it is why we're part of this. It is why people are, are drawn to come work for HopSkip Drive is because we believe in our mission and, and that safety is everything. And that it is so important to make sure that these vulnerable kids have a safe, reliable access to opportunity, right? That's, that's what, that's what we love and want to be part of is, is helping students get where they need to be so that, especially the populations we serve, right? You mentioned, you know, these are students in group homes, students with IEPs. These are kids that don't always get all the recognition. They don't always get the opportunities because their parents are working three jobs. They're trying to make ends meet. And, and we're so proud of the opportunity we have to be part of solving that solution. And, and most of our drivers are too. They are members of the community. They are parents, they are teachers, they are people that are, want to give back to their community that find value in helping these students and, and making sure that they get to where they need to be safely.
If I could just bring it back to the incident, could you speak, you're referring to continuous improvement. Could you put a little specificity into what that means as a reaction, as a result of dissecting and, you know, breaking down this? It is horrible. What happened and how it happened? What specifically did you do to remediate as a preventative measure going forward?
Yeah. We, you know, when, whenever we have an incident, we have those conversations. So I can point to many features in our tech and our process and our, our policies to improve on. You know, for this specific incident, you know, it's one of the reasons, we've had a lot of discussions about offering in-vehicle recording. It's a safety concern for both sides of our community, for the driver community, for parents who don't want their kids being recorded. It's a large hairy issue. There's a lot of privacy laws. Can school districts approve for minors not in their control to be recorded, you know? But we, you know, from this, we decide that we want to dig through that. We want to work closely with our school district partners. We want to follow all the laws and, and offer that out because we do think that's super important, right? As a deterrent or as, you know, something to help. We always work with law enforcement. We're very proactive whenever a situation occurs to work with law enforcement. You know, Mike's team, once, the minute we heard about this incident, Mike's team reached out to the police. We were being proactive. We, all we knew was the driver had been arrested and we were trying to get more information and we were trying to find out what happened. Because we want to be part of that solution and part of the, the helping make things better. And so, that's another reason why we are very dedicated to have this in-vehicle recording. We're talking about our improved parental notification, working very closely with Scottsdale and all of our other school district partners. on what level of communication do you want us communicating with parents about? Some schools don't want us communicating with their parents, they want everything funneling through their own departments. And so we're trying to find the right way to do that well for each individual school district and their needs and what their parents need as well.
Okay, thank you. Given the number of sensors and sensor systems that are available now, it does seem like there could be some spec, specific action items taken there. Ms. Crozier, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, in the interest, in the interest, in the interest of time, it is ten o'clock. You each get one more question or comment and then we're moving on, okay?
Perfect.
Ms. Sinowski.
Thank you, President, Dr. Hartwells. In what way are you engaging feedback from, uh, students and parents about their rider experience?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, um, every parent is able to rate their care driver, um, through the app after the ride's over. We do review all of that feedback, both positive and negative, and we will take action, uh, with the drivers if we see anything concerning in that feedback. Additionally, parents are always welcome to contact us. We have a, a team that's dedicated to supporting parent community specifically. They always give that feedback. That feedback immediately goes to our trust and safety team to investigate and, and take action on. We, we really value the feedback we get from the community because we know they're the ones interacting with the drivers every day and, and we appreciate that feedback because we know that's only going to make our platform better.
So that, oops, I asked my question.
Thank you. Ms. Carney.
Uh, thank you, since you gave me one more question, I'm going to ask it. Did we or have we considered, uh, did you discuss, um, using Hop Skip Drive on a month-to-month basis, which I see is allowed through Mojave? Uh, has that discussion happened?
At this point, we're open to any options on, um, how we can get students transported. So I, that wouldn't, I have no issue with that, um, and looking at, at that, that option. That's not a, that's not a problem, that's something we can definitely look at.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Warner.
So I am the one who asked for a meeting and it really was to have a discussion, which I thought would happen in executive session regarding terminating the contract. The information that I shared today was publicly sourced through public records requests and news stories. None of this information that I shared was given through Scottsdale Unified. It is publicly available, um, out there. Thank you.
All right.
Can I, sorry, just about the contract, I do, I want to point out, it is as needed. You can choose to add or remove students at any point, at any time. So if you decide to approve the contract, it is not a commitment to us. It is still, it's just saying where it can be an option for the Transportation Department. I want to make sure that was clear, that it is, there's no minimum commitment necessary to, to have the contract.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's true with all of our vendors.
All right, thank you. Any remaining questions or comments can be submitted in writing. All right, we're going to move on to our action. Thank you to our guests for attending this evening. I think it was helpful, um, legitimate questions. Action item eight A, uh, approval of the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five expenditure budget and a call for the public hearing. Just to be clear on what we're being asked to approve, it is the call for the public hearing and the contents of what will be in that public hearing, correct?
Yes, so the, it will be the budget as we have right now, um, will come forth then on the twenty-fifth, um, and it would be for that, that public hearing.
And the public hearing is required by law.
Yes, it is.
Very good. Any comments or questions? This has been presented previously. Ms. Carney.
We have a presentation.
You have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll go quick. So just looking at the budget, um, this talks about the budget development. It's the same as what we've gone over in the past, um, that we are required to annually do a proposed budget by July fifth. That budget, we have to have that, um, notice on the website for ten days prior to that meeting and publicize, which we will do, that will be available, um, most likely tomorrow. And that we have to adopt a budget no later than July fifteenth. This is similar to what you've seen in the past in our budget development. MNO estimates were presented to the governing board in November, January, March, and then we had a work study in March twenty-sixth. We did capital estimates on January thirtieth. To develop our capital plan, our capital budget, we have continued with the Capital Plan Committee, who goes through, looks at what, uh, needs are there and then makes recommendations based on the budget that we have available. And then, um, the bulk of our budget is salaries and benefits, and so that was done through the IBN process. As Dr. Menzel mentioned earlier, the state has not approved a budget, so that makes this a little bit more difficult. We are using the prior year budget forms that the Auditor General's Office gave to us. Because they have not adopted a budget yet, we have to use the same base level as this year. So to be able to come, or to be able to adjust the fact that we know that will go up two percent, we have inflated the, um, ADM to make that adjustment as we couldn't adjust the base level. Statutorily, the state is required to increase two percent or the inflation, so that should not be an issue. We reduced our ADM by three fifty based off of historical information. We anticipate that the base level will increase by two percent and be about fifty-one oh three. We have the maintenance and operations override, which is fifteen percent of the revenue control limit. And then the biggest challenges we dealt with this year was the sunsetting of ESAR funds and, um, results-based funds, um, depleting as they're no longer being funded. Uh, when we talked in March about the tentative budget approval, we, um, showed some, um, areas where we were making cuts to the budget, to free up some dollars. Those discussions continue to happen even after that process was done. And so we've added some additional budgets, um, that were made after that tentative approval. These aren't in MNO, but they're things that we have gotten rid of, um, or cut out of the budget. Some, uh, quite a few of them being software recognizing that there are tools that we have, that there are multiple ways to get that information, or we're just not utilizing those programs enough to make it, um, reasonable to continue paying for them. This is a little bit different than what we have talked about before and it feeds into some things that we'll be addressing, um, on June twenty-fifth, uh, specifically with some, and we're still trying to get information that has to do with a, a quasi Meyer lawsuit. But we thought it was important to talk about with district budgets, they're, they're budget-driven. So there are budget-driven accounts, your MNO, your override, your capital, classroom funds. That's based off of a formula that's set by the state. What that budget is, is what that budget is based off of that formula. With that, then the, um, that is how much you can spend. And it doesn't matter how much cash you have on hand. That is what your budget is, is what you can spend. Now, you have to actually have cash in the bank as well. So when we're talking about cash with budget accounts, and you'll see this when, um, we present the AFR, you'll usually see within MNO, it'll say like what our budget balance was, but it'll also see what our cash balance is. The cash balance doesn't determine how much money we can actually spend. So if we have a hundred million, a hundred and ninety million budget approved, we've got a hundred and ninety-five million dollars in cash, does, or that we throughout the year have accumulated a hundred and ninety-five million in cash. That doesn't mean we've got five million more we can spend. It means we've got five million in cash above, above what, what we need, um, but we can't actually spend that money. That is important for us because you have to have cash in the bank when you write a warrant. Same thing with your own, you know, your own checking account. You got to have the money in the bank to be able to write that check. Our bank is Maricopa County Treasurer. If you do not have enough cash in the bank when you issue those warrants, then you have to do what's called, um, registered warrants, which I kind of think is kind of like overdraft protection. Or you have to do tax anticipation notes where you're collecting that money upfront. That come, um, to be able to cover those amounts. And that comes into play because even though we have a budget, we're spending come July first. We don't, we, we get our money off of property taxes. And so those property taxes, the bulk of that money comes in twice, twice a year. So we're, we're looking at what is our cash and what is our budget? To be able to know, are we going to have enough cash at the beginning of the school year to cover whatever expenses we have until that big influx comes in, in October? We get our cash from state taxes, um, and that is set by the county based on what our budget is. And then from that, we get that, that cash in, uh, the bulk of it in October and May. There's, there's cash coming in every single month, but the bulk of that really comes in twice a year. So one of the questions is, well, how could you end up with extra cash? Why would you even talk about having a hundred and nine, you know, more cash than what your budget actually allows? When we're setting our budget, we're setting it based on right now, what we think we're going to have for next year. But, um, we don't know, you know, we're based off a hundredth day. We're not going to hit the hundredth day until January. That tax rate is going to be set based off of what we know essentially before school even starts, or what we think before school even starts. So if we've estimated high on our budget and, you know, with the hundredth day with the revision, it comes in lower than what we thought when that tax rate was set, you're going to have a situation where you're likely collecting more in cash than, um, than you would have. The reverse is true as well. If yours, if we are estimating, um, high and we come in low, that, lower than what we estimated on that budget, we're going to have the reverse effect of we're not going to collect enough in taxes to be able to cover what that budget was. So there's also that need to make sure that there's a little bit of cushion within that, to, to be able to cover cash in our budget as we, as we move forward throughout the year. Kind of talked about that. That excess cash becomes what we call dead cash. And again, that's important to us because we need to have that cash in the bank while we're waiting for money to come in from the state. And we get all of our money through our levy, uh, we are not a state aid school district. So it's really dependent on when that, those book, those bulk payments come to us. Kind of touched on that. So with that, this is what we estimate the tax rate to be for next year. That may change, the twenty-four, twenty-five estimate may change between now and the, um, the budget presentation on the twenty-fifth and where we do the public hearing. And the reason for that is, um, people have probably begun to hear in the paper about the quasi Meyer lawsuit and the effect that it is having for Maricopa and, um, taxing entities. For Scottsdale schools, it's twenty-seven point five million dollars in cash. That's why I talk about the, the dead cash a little bit there. We are still, there are a lot of unanswered, there's a lot of unknowns. But that is something we're going to have to look at and, you know, if we're, unless something changes at this point, we've got twenty-seven million we're going to have to come up with in, in, in cash. And so, um, to be able to adjust that when we find out hopefully some more information in the next couple of weeks, there's new information that comes in every single day, um, that estimated tax rate may change. And again, we don't set that tax rate, it's an estimate that's actually set by the Maricopa County. So, um, we're looking at what we think it will be, but depending on what happens and what decisions are made in the next couple of weeks could impact what that tax rate looks like for next year. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Board members, are there any questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion then to approve item eight A, approval of the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five expenditure budget and call for public hearing. Is there a second?
Second to that motion.
Ms. Sinowski, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion passes four zero. We're moving on to action item eight B, approval, approve the purchase of contracted transportation services using the Mojave Educational Services Arizona Cooperative Contract. Ms. Crozier.
I think, I think our previous presentation talked about, um, what's on that co-op. And so if there are any, I...
Any follow-up questions, board members? Ms. Carney.
I just think that we, as a board, have to, um, if we're going to even consider this, we have to be on a month-to-month, um, contract and minimize the amount that we're, that we are willing to put toward this transportation while we're in search of a new alternative. There's no way we should be giving six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the service. Like you said, it was five hundred and fifty thousand approved last year. I didn't want to do it then. I just don't want to do it now, but I know we're in, we're in a predicament. We've been left with no solutions, so I, I feel like our hands are tied and it's unfair. It's unfair.
Ms. Warner.
Dr. Menzel, what have you personally done to help solve the transportation problems Scottsdale Unified? I know this is something that you've been dealing with for, you know, a long time.
So I have to give prompts to our transportation team, particularly, uh, our director, David Jacobson and Shannon. You saw on the slide earlier, all of the things that we've done from having the media out to bring people in. We were able to get a lot of interest. Talking to my superintendent colleagues across the valley and across the state, many, not all, but many districts are dealing with the very same thing. They're all having to contract for a specialized service because they can't find enough drivers. And, and this is a product of the local economy. It's a product of the fact that people don't want to do the, the kind of shift that a bus driver needs to do because you get up early in the morning, then you have a break, and then you're working late in the day. Some people don't want to put their backs to sixty kids. Some people don't like to drive in the construction traffic or whatever. We have continued to work to find people. When we get twelve, nine retire.
I'm sorry, you're not answering my question. What did you personally do?
I support the team. I support the team all of the time.
Just so you know, you're failing.
Okay, Ms. Warner, let's talk to the action item only, please.
I am.
Any other comments or questions on the merits? Ms. Sinowski.
Thank you, Board President, Dr. Hartwells. I, I also, I mean, it's the number of kids we saw on that list. It's a lot of kids. And I understand that because this is a vulnerable population of students depending upon IEPs and how they're written and whether they need transportation, it's not a consistent factor that we are dealing with the same number every single year. Is that correct?
That is correct. We, we know that these are the numbers based off of this current year that we're just wrapping up. Those numbers could change some. I don't think, and you know, you don't see, I don't think we'll see huge changes. Like I said, we are talking, we're talking with SPED if, you know, what reviews can be done on those IEPs to again, see what students are, are ready to go back to, um, the regular transportation. And, and even if that means putting another adult on the bus to help with that, I don't think that that will, I mean, I think we could maybe find some students with that. I don't know that that will make a huge impact on, on the number of students. I know in the conversations with the Special Ed Department, we've talked about being really, really careful about not just putting it in an IEP because, just because, but making sure that that is really what is needed for that student. If it is needed, absolutely do it, but let's make sure that it really is needed before we put it in there. We continue to do, um, what we can to get, to get bus drivers and, and look at other services. Like I said, we've got everdriven on here as well. If that's a service that we can, we can utilize, we keep, we'll keep talking to, to vendors and figuring out what, what we can do.
I appreciate the effort and, and I do recognize that this is not just a Scottsdale or an Arizona issue. For years, it has been a national issue with the shortage of available drivers throughout, for the schools. So I'm very aware of that and I understand there's not an easy solution. If parents can't transport their kids and the district can't, I mean, that's a predicament we need to figure out and it's not happening because we're, we're angry about it. So I just, thank you guys for your creativity and I know you care about this as well.
All right, thank you. We're going to, I'm going to move to approve action. And, and I'll just reiterate, thank you for the invitation to receive proposed solutions. And I would charge and invite everyone to be thinking about solutions. Until then, we have a required obligation to these students. Eight A, um, I'm sorry, eight B. I move to approve the purchase of contracted transportation services using the Mojave Educational Services Arizona Cooperative Contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sinowski, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
No.
That motion fails two-two. We are moving on to act...
I do have a motion. That's where my motion is.
Ms., Ms. Carney, you would like to speak?
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells, yes. I'd like to make a motion because I, like I said, I know we're in a predicament. Our students need to be transported. This is not the option I don't think any of us would like to, to do, especially myself. So I would like to make a motion that we do, uh, a month-to-month, um, for the next six months and, uh, within a, a max amount not to exceed, uh, half that, three hundred and... and within a max amount, not to exceed half that, $325,000 to get us going so that we can absolutely be looking for other solutions or readdress this at that point. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'm going to read back to you what I wrote down to your motion so that we're all on the same page of what is being, what's being asked of the board. Ms. Kearney has made a motion to approve the purchase of contract transportation services using that cooperative contract, the Mojave Educational Services, on a month-to-month basis for a total of six months with a total budget cap not to exceed, what was the number?
I just didn't have, so...
325, $325,000.
And the six months is max?
Yeah, a month-to-month for a total of six months with a total budget not to exceed $325,000. Is that accurate? Is there a second to that motion?
I have a question for clarification.
Ms. Sinowski?
Is there a plan for at the six months? Because the students are in school for longer than six months and will need this transportation.
I would say that's part of the work that we'll be doing is to, as David mentioned earlier, 50 more rides by one of our current providers. We have one that we haven't used, but Shannon mentioned that they've got new leadership so there may be an opportunity there. Our first choice always, as was said at the beginning of the presentation, is to hire our own drivers. So we're going to continue to work to get more drivers as well. So it's a combination of all those factors that we'll be putting in place and then come back to the board with a report on all of the things that have been discussed tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Question about the motion, because if you look at what the action item actually states, it's contracted transportation services using the Mojave Education Services Cooperative Contract. Does that mean all other contracts within that co-op?
No, ma'am, that would just be for...
Just for hop, skip, drive?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, can we have it state that hop, skip, drive and not just the motion to every six or every month for six months?
So Ms. Sinowski, you are amending the motion that's on the table that hasn't been seconded yet to read and make a motion to approve the purchase of contracted transportation services from hop, skip, drive on a month-to-month basis for a total of six, for a total of six months with a budget of not to exceed $325,000 under the specific cooperative agreement?
Yes, yes. Otherwise, how will our kids get to school?
Is there a second to the amended motion? Is there a second to the first modified motion? Your lights are on. I don't know if you wish to make a motion or if you're... Is there, so there's no second to either one of those? I will second Ms. Sinowski's motion, which is a further refined and focused amendment of Ms. Kearney's motion. And again, I'm going to read this again just so that we're all on the same page and there's no confusion. The current motion is to approve the purchase of contracted transportation services from hop, skip, drive using the Mojave Educational Services Arizona Cooperative Contract on a month-to-month basis with a, for a cap of six months total with a total budget not to exceed $325,000.
That, that discussion, please.
Ms. Warner.
So I see that you're giggling and laughing. I guess my concern is if this was to move forward with the motion that Ms. Sinowski made, what are you doing to ensure that these things don't happen again? And are you taking care of the girl that this happened to?
We're not going to, we're not here to have an interrogation of anybody. So is there a second to the motion? Ms. Sinowski, I seconded. So we're all good on what we've got on the table. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
No.
That motion passes 3-0. Oh, sorry, 3-1, pardon me. Okay. All right, we are going to move on to item 8C, approve the purchase of multiple commodities and services using the Omni Partners Cooperative Contracts. Ms. Crozier, taking questions?
Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Very good. I move to approve... Ms. Warner.
Yes, on K-12 Insights, I had requested, I tabled this last time, and I had requested the messages that were being sent through Let's Talk because what I discovered is that while the data sheet that Mr. Menzel sent us was simply inaccurate because the information that's being put in is inaccurate. So when our parents or somebody is sending a message, they're not getting a response. And so the message was sent on, I think it was March 25th. The second one was April 9th and then ultimately just closed out and nothing happened. So when I requested the messages, which is what I wanted, it was declined citing policy BCC, which again, I could come in and do it myself. And so I am, because I was not given the information that I asked for, and now the price went up from, what, $57,000 to $70,000, I'm not going to support this measure unless you're willing to do something about the messages that I requested. I'm talking to Mr. Menzel.
Dr. Menzel, do you wish to respond?
So the request for all of the messages that, and the dialogues over 800, would have taken far more than two hours of staff time to print out, redact, and provide. And pursuant to board policy, anything that requires more than two hours of work can be denied by the superintendent. The board member has the ability to request that be placed on an agenda item for governing board consideration. That was not made and so that's why it's not on this agenda. I did provide the summary report of the dialogues that were there, how many were there, what the customer satisfaction survey is and the results. I don't know what specific dialogue she's talking about, but there are, just in that one time period, more than 800. So that was the reason for the denial, not because we have anything to hide, but because of the amount of time and the amount of work, as you even saw evidence tonight, that our team has been spending providing information to the governing board on our strategic plan priorities, on the assessment results, on the budget that we have to bring forward. All of those things take time and so we have to prioritize what are the most important things. And that's why we provided the summary report but said no to the other unless the governing board thought that was a top priority, in which case we would do it.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Okay, in the interest of time, in the interest of time, this isn't part of approving contracts under this cooperative contract. You have an issue with a very specific vendor of a task that has nothing to do with this action item or a tenuous connection. You are upset that you didn't get a task completed that you asked for specifically. That is not a board task and we are going to move on. Ms. Kearney, do you have a comment on the merits of this action item only?
I, yes. I would like to know, because we're talking about Let's Talk, Let's Talk Dialogue Subject to Public Record requests.
So, yes, they are.
Again, this is not an action item. I'm happy you can ask for it at the future items. We're almost there.
What do you mean? How are we voting on this?
That has nothing, whether, who cares if it's part of, what does it have to do with your decision on whether to approve a cooperative contract, suspend it or a cooperative contract? I want to stay on the agenda. We have to be aware of what's on the agenda. There might be ancillary issues you'd like to discuss later at a future item and you have an opportunity tonight to present that for a future board item.
I just had a second question and Dr. Menzel was answering it before you cut him off.
Because we need to stay on the items that have been agendized. Thank you.
Can I clarify that there are two components? So this is not just Let's Talk. So $57,500, I believe, is the Let's Talk component. The other is the Engage Survey component. And that's the piece that's different from the first read. In my meeting with K-12 Insight, talking to them about this having been tabled and also noting that we had not recommended carrying forward the Hanover contract and needed to have a vehicle for continuing to survey our parents on culture and climate and our staff and our students. They said that they would provide that transition support so that we could have that available using the Engage platform that we have been using for a couple of years, but now not putting the burden of being able to create that within our system on our staff. But they would do that at no additional charge, something that they typically would charge if they were running a culture-climate survey, they'd charge $25,000. So that's an in-kind service being provided to us if this is approved.
Okay, I move to approve the purchase of multiple commodities and services using the Omni Partners Cooperative Contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sinowski, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
No.
That motion fails 2-2.
I'd like to make a motion, though.
Ms. Kearney, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to separate the two contracts and vote on them separately. I'd like to make a motion to vote separately on ever-driven and then vote separately on K-12 Insight.
Okay, you can go ahead and articulate your motion then.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve ever-driven for contract transportation.
Second.
Question for clarification.
Ms. Sinowski?
How does this impact our district? If we separate or do away with any of these?
From an impact perspective, aye. Ever-driven is an option that we haven't used, but given the conversation we had tonight, we believe we need to have all options on the table and so that would be supported. And with respect to K-12 Insight, we've had, since I've been here, a commitment to enhance two-way communication with our community. If the governing board removes the tool that's been in place for the last three years, that will have an impact on the trust and the ability for our staff and for our families to be able to communicate with the district in a way where we have some accountability for timely response and an ability to have customer feedback related to that. Additionally, with the survey tool, that's something. We have culture and climate survey. We did not extend and renew the contract with Hanover. So the board would be taking away tools and asking us to be able to deliver on enhanced communication with our community, but don't do it with any resources.
Okay, that sounded like an adverse impact to me. Ms. Kearney, you had made a motion and Ms. Warner seconded, so we do have that on the table to vote on. All those in favor of Ms. Kearney's amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Nay?
Nay.
That's a 2-2. That motion fails as well. We are moving on. Item 8D, approve the renewal of SUSD contract for fiscal year 2024-2025. Oh, fiscal year's on there twice. Ms. Crozier.
Again, this was an item that was tabled from the last meeting and so we're open to any questions.
Are there any board member questions or comments? Ms. Kearney?
Thank you. Yeah, I pulled this item last meeting as there were a lot of red flags and I'm really glad I did because I want to thank you for all the extra information that we did receive between board meetings. It's obvious that we've outsourced our special education department. In 2018, we spent $573,445 on special ed contractors. In fiscal year 2024, we've spent $4,814,303, which is over a 700% increase in six years. So while I've got many continued concerns, specifically on this contract, I would like to understand why several vendors who are listed on here, we don't use at all and we haven't used since, since 2018, we haven't used. We have not used Light Street. We have not used A&amp;M Allied and Invo, is that what it says? Invo Healthcare. And Student Therapy, we've not used since 2018, yet these vendors are listed here. So I'm concerned that we have vendors listed on here that we're not using and have not used in the past six years. So I would like to know who are we actually, the vendors we're planning to contract with for this $5 million? We should not be listing any vendors that we're not using or interested in using.
Board member Kearney, because this was a RFP that we personally did for our school district, those are the vendors that, when that was, RFP was done, I think in October of '23, those were the vendors that were selected based off of that. And so therefore, because those were the vendors that were selected and put forth to the board, that's why they continue to be on there. We may not be using them, but because the RFP process with it, because it was awarded originally to all of those vendors, that's why we have to bring forth all of them, even though we're not necessarily using them. On a co-op, it's a little bit different, but with our own internal, those are the, those were the vendors that were originally awarded the contract.
Okay, so it seems like that's a way that fraud could happen. Having vendors listed that we're not even using is a concern for me. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Boozen, could you comment, please?
I mean, to make a fraud allegation, it'd be nice to have some facts. I understand the concern, but I agree with Ms. Crozier that if they were awarded a contract that we owe the vendors to be on this approval list.
Thank you. So just to be clear, and we'll come back to you, Ms. Kearney, in case you're not done, to remove any of these vendors who were awarded under the RFP would put the district in a liability position?
Yes, I agree. That would be inappropriate and not wise for us.
Thank you. Ms. Kearney, you finished?
Well, can I just confirm then? So we need to continue through this for the next, till the fifth, till this is over? So we've got two more years of the same RFP?
Within that RFP, this is an annual we have to bring back every year to be renewed. So if it was not renewed, then that would then end, and that RFP, we would then do, if needed, we would then have to issue a new RFP or we would have to use the services that are provided on the co-op. When we moved forward with the decision to do an RFP last year, or I'm sorry, in 2023, it had to do with, because not all of the services we were needing were covered under the co-op that was out there at the time. I don't know, there might be co-ops now that cover those things. I don't, I don't know. We'd have to research that. But that was the reason behind adding. That's also why you'll see a lot of those duplications of vendors, is that not everything we needed was covered under that co-op. So we had to go out and do that for ourselves. Some of the pricing that we have is better than what's on the co-op. Some of it is better on the co-op. So we try to look at when we're doing it, which is the better deal for us between the two when they're looking at it. And we run into the same thing even with, like with the contracted drivers, you know, is where can we get the service? This year, it might be one company. Last year, it was a different company. We're just trying to figure out who can provide what we need, when we need it. And some we know are a little bit more preferred than others.
Right, I think my concern is that I just had not seen us use them since, I mean, 2018 at least. That's as far back as I could see. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sinowski?
Thank you, Board President, Dr. Hartwells. Shannon, let me just kind of clear something up here. Just because there is a vendor listed in such a contract doesn't mean we have to use them. Isn't that correct? Or is it just giving us more options for potential resources?
I mean, when we're awarding our RFP to somebody, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to say, hey, we're going to give you business and then never, ever do that. That's, you know, our goal is to select the minimum number of vendors that we need to be able to provide the services that are needed. But no, awarding, renewing a contract, co-op, or one of our RFPs for a dollar amount is not a guarantee that we're going to use that amount of money with that vendor or with that co-op.
Thank you, Shannon.
And, you know.
Ms. Warner?
Just to clarify, I missed the last part of what she just said. But so with the, is the $5 million in aggregate account, aggregate amount that can be used, however you choose between these vendors? Or, just for clarification, or is it specified amounts to be used? Like if Invo Healthcare, if you didn't use the money allocated for them, you could turn that in and use it for Kaleidoscope?
So the vendors that are with, on that RFP, that total would be $5 million. So we would, we will, we will put a flag in our system that says, for this RFP, with the vendors that are connected to this RFP, the maximum spend, if approved, would be $5 million. We might spend $100,000... We might spend $100,000 with Kaleidoscope, we might spend $100,000 with another vendor. It just does, within that group of vendors, that's the amount that we would.
Thank you.
Up to that amount. Hopefully, I'd really like to not spend that much money, but it would be up to that amount.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move to a vote. I make the motion to approve the renewal of SUSD contracts for fiscal year 2024, '25. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sinowski, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, please say nay?
No.
That motion passes three-one. We are moving on to 8E, approval of renewal of tenant leases. Ms. Crozier, again?
Still me? Thank you, Board Member, Board President Hartwells. We have a few, a handful of tenants that their lease agreement was, is ending the end of this month, so we have submitted those vendors, or rentals, for renewal. We did have one change that came in this afternoon with Miracle League. They were very minor red line changes within the contract, so we did upload that unfortunately late this afternoon. We did have Mr. Bozen review that and looked to make sure that, you know, do we need to pull this item, or are those changes very, they're not substantive, they're essentially defining rent? But those are, there is a red line version of that in board docs, free to review, and I do apologize that it was given to us so, so late and uploaded, uploaded late this afternoon.
You're referring?
Miracle League?
You're referring to a delta of around $250 bucks?
It's not even, it's not even the dollar amount. They put some red, it's like language changes that they wanted in the contract that were...
Was there, and there was no materiality?
They're, they're just form.
Thank you.
They're defining, yeah.
They're defining things.
They're just form.
Thank you. Any board member questions or comments? All right, very good. I move to approve action item 8E, approval of the renewal of tenant leases. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sinowski, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes four-zero. Moving on to 8F, approval of supplemental materials and secondary novels for the 2024, '25 school year. There is a presentation? Okay?
There is. Good evening again, governing board members. I would like to invite Dr. Kim, Stod Karen, and our Jana, academic coach ELA, to the podium to share both the recommended novels and the process that we use to bring the recommended novels for your approval this evening, but also the supplemental list. And just wanted to give a shout out to the team members across departments for the Herculean lift and efforts to take a look at the supplemental list and go line by line this year to clean it up and make sure that we have an accurate list moving forward. So grateful for the work behind the scenes and the facilitation this eve.
Thank you. I'm not sure, do I need to find this? Perfect. Good evening, President, Dr. Hartwells, governing board members, Dr. Menzel, Ms. Wagner, members still present here today. I am grateful for the opportunity to become, come forward tonight with our annual review of supplemental materials and the novels that the novel review committee has been reading this year. Tonight, we actually have two members of our novel review committee who are still the last two standing. Thank you, Michael Lynn Stewart, for being here with us tonight. I'm going to let Jana take a seat for a minute until we come up to talk about novels. Our goals this evening are to clarify guiding statute and board policies associated with curriculum. I'm just going to touch on them. We will review our district definitions for adopted materials, supplemental, and ancillary curriculum. We're going to share with you and articulate the process for selecting and using our adopted materials, our supplemental and our ancillary materials, and ultimately, we will ask for approval of our supplemental materials and novels that we are recommending for you this evening. As Dr. Benson mentioned, I am proud to share the work of our various departments. Many of our coordinators and directors are still here tonight as well. We made a concerted effort this year to really kind of clean up our supplemental materials. As you've seen before, we come before you with kind of a big spreadsheet, and in reviewing that spreadsheet, we identified that not all departments were represented, and we wanted to make our best effort, just me as the speaker to all of you, to share all of the materials that we use. So listed here are a variety of our state statute and district policies associated with curriculum. We really believe that this is important because the work of our teaching and learning team, our education services department as a whole, truly uses these as guideposts because we do believe the work that we do requires integrity and is, it's essential for us to ultimately bring forward recommendations to you for use throughout SUSD. As you all know, in our profession, we have our own vernacular, and some of that vernacular within teaching and learning are associated with different definitions associated with materials. They're listed here before you for adopted texted materials, supplemental books and novels, supplemental materials, as well as ancillary materials. I'll use this language throughout the presentation. Curriculum adoptions, our adopted texted materials, these are materials that are taken through the formal adoption process, where by now, I think you're familiar with the system that we've established to ensure that we are in alignment with statute and policy. These are committee work, open to the public, we follow open meeting law, we meet our statutory timelines, come before you with a recommendation, and once approved, it's our expectation that in a classroom, within our schools, 80% of the instructional time minimum is utilizing our tier-one district-approved materials. We wanted to highlight for you as well, through these links, the different ways that we do our best to communicate with all of our schools, as well as our community, about our curriculum adoptions that might be in process, as well as the materials that are used in our schools. So we know that when parents come to a curriculum night, or a parent-teacher conference, or a meet-the-teacher, there's a lot of information, and they might learn a little bit about something and have more questions. So if they were to go to our curriculum adoption pages, or our curriculum site for teaching and learning, they would be able to search by grade band and learn more about our curriculum. We do have a new website that the communications team is launching for us on July 1st. It will have the same information, just in a little bit of a new format. And then in terms of, for teacher stakeholders, internally, we have Home Room, and through Home Room, all of our coaches have curriculum sites that outline all of our curriculum. Supplemental materials that I'm here to share with you this evening, and we kind of classify these into two categories. We have our novels, and these are the sets of novels, we review them in our committees, and we organize them by grade level, and when they are set by grade level, we do our very best to maintain that grade level that the committee has determined that those books are relevant for. We utilize a rubric all along the way to make the recommendations that we bring before you. We also have supplemental materials. These are also district-approved materials. These are used to enhance, enrich the content that is being taught in the classroom. So while we have our tier-one materials, district-adopted, there might be something that a teacher wants to expand upon the topic that is being studied, and that would be a supplemental material. This is, again, district-supported, board-approved. Often, there might be financial support provided, and we take care of that as a district. We don't ask a PTO to pay for it, we don't ask tax credit to pay for it. That would be something that, as a district, we are committing to, and that our coaches, depending on the department, will work with our teachers to be sure the teachers are prepared to use that resource. Illustrated on this slide, in the past, we had on our curriculum page kind of a left margin, I'll call it, that had bullets, if you will, of topics, like you can see here, curriculum, early learning, elementary, middle school, high school, and then there was a supplemental materials list. When looking at it, there's a lot of information on the page, so we've actually added a new link. We removed the small link on the left, and I'll try to see if this will click onto there. We added a new link on our curriculum page that will also be on the page come July 1, but normally, people would look by, by grade level, but then we added it down here, just in that band. We thought visually it might be more eye-catching for someone, as opposed to trying to just maybe happen upon it on the left-hand side column. So hopefully, you think that is an improvement for us, but we thought visually it was more forward-facing for our, our community. Now, this will be my test. Maybe tech can help me get back. I don't know. Thank you. And then, again, annually, we come before you for an approval of supplemental materials. Last year, we did not have any new supplemental materials to present to you outside of novels, so we did not bring forward the new list. But this year, as I mentioned, we, and Dr. Benson mentioned, we had a Herculean effort to really create a comprehensive supplemental materials list. In the past, it was one spreadsheet that, you know, maybe had 25, 25 rows. What we've done now is we've created tabs by department, and you'll see, we have created a red strike through. This denotes a resource that has been eliminated because we aren't using it, or maybe somebody, frankly, didn't even know that it was being used. It has been moved maybe to another content area, maybe it was a duplicate in two different spots, or it might have even been redefined as a tier-one resource. A prime example would be something like Saxon Math, had been historically listed on, as a supplemental material, and we believed that that would be important to be moved to a tier-one. Things that are highlighted in blue, these are existing resources, but they weren't already on our list. These were things that had been used, you know, for 10 years or more by different departments, and they were on their own department list, but not on the teaching and learning, if you will, supplemental list. And then in orange, we've highlighted resources that are new, and we're requesting for board approval. I want to draw attention, on this spreadsheet, we did make an edit today when I learned that Capstone had been removed from the board agenda. We were kind of working simultaneously, thinking that the board would be reviewing Capstone at the same time, so we did put a strike through on Pebble Go, until if it does come before the board for approval, then we would add that back in. So I do want you to know that that has been amended. So coming tonight for you, our recommendations for supplemental materials, as you know, we recently adopted CKLA. For many, many years, SUSD has utilized novels through units of study in our elementary schools. These are great, appropriate, aligned with social studies, often wonderful resources. We are requesting from the board that the CKLA, I'm sorry, the units of study, K-5 ELA books, that have typically been used as units of study, be repurposed as a supplemental that can be used to add to CKLA as a read aloud, or could be used as a social studies supplemental material. And we also want to recommend two new resources for supplementals. One is for special education, a product called Vizzle. This would replace an existing product that would have a strike through on our spreadsheet of something called Teach Town. It's published by a company, Rethink Ed, Rethink Autism. It's on a co-op through Dice Art, and the cost would be $28,000. This would be a product that special education, pending board approval, would begin using in January of 2025. And then we also are coming before you with a request for a sixth, grade 612 ELA in math digital curriculum, an adaptive curriculum. As you know, we approved the use of iXL in grades K-5. We are recommending a continuum with 612. They are with, iXL was on the K-5 RFP that we were granted earlier this year. We would like to add on, this does fall in the Mesa Save Cooperative, and the cost for grades 612 for ELA in math would be $167,000. iXL, for your knowledge, has been used by other departments in the past as a supplemental, but this we are requesting for use with all students in SUSD. Now, the next component of our presentation tonight that Jana will share with you is the process of the novel review committee. This is a wonderful group of people that we've had the great pleasure to get to know really well over the last three years. We, we meet monthly to review books that initially were part of our secondary ELA curriculum adoption, but also include materials that teachers would like to add for their curriculum, be it a social studies course, be it a dual enrollment course, an advanced placement course. So Jana's going to come on up and share with you the work of the novel review committee this year, and the books that we've read, and how we are recommending. Thank you, Jana.
Good evening. So glad I finally get to get up here. So we do have approved novels by grade level, and you can find those novel lists on our SUSD homepage on the curriculum site. We've got approved novels for grades 6 through 8, and we have them for grades 9 through 12. And we expect that our teachers will communicate with their families via newsletters, websites, curriculum night, their course syllabus, what novels they are intending to use with their students throughout the school year. SUSD does a really nice job of listening to our parents, and parents have the right to opt their students out of any novels that they may find objectionable, and for that reason, teachers are also expected to have an alternative novel available for those students to use, along with teaching plans, so that all students will be involved in the classroom discussions. So the purpose of our secondary novel review committee is to provide materials that will enrich and support the curriculum and the Arizona standards, taking into consideration the varied interests, abilities, learning styles, and maturity levels of our students, also to provide materials that will stimulate growth in factual knowledge and literary appreciation, to provide materials so that young people have an opportunity to practice critical analysis and make informed judgments in their daily lives, and finally, to assure that we have a comprehensive collection that is appropriate for our school community. This is a list of our community members, our parents that participated, our teachers, our administrators, and our teaching and learning team. We had a very robust committee this year. And we were busy. We met frequently, regularly, both small group and whole group. So how were novels selected for review? Dr. Dodds touched on this a little bit, but teachers can propose new books to be added to their curriculum, parents can request review of novels, and sometimes just changing a novel from one grade level to another, it would need to be reviewed. The process for reviewing novels would be that each small group would be assigned a novel, and the group members within there would individually read and complete a rubric to evaluate that novel, and then the small groups would meet to discuss their novel, and they'd make a group recommendation. And then when we got together for our whole group meetings, each small group would present their novel, be available for questions with the whole group, and then each member in the whole group would make their own individual recommendations on those novels. When recommending a novel to the governing board for approval, we had several factors that we considered. First of all, is the novel aligned to the standards? And did the committee recommend the novel? And if the novel was recommended, were there concerns that were brought forward that might require additional thought and review before a recommendation is made? Based on these considerations, we have three categories of novels. We have green, which are ready for recommendation. Yellow is a conditional recommendation. It's a heads-up for the teachers that there may be some sensitive information. And a red novel is one that we're not recommending for use at this time, but we can take a look at it later. With the yellow novels, if a teacher would like to use a yellow novel, they would fill out a conditional recommendation form. This is a Google form, and it comes to me, and then I forward that to the site administrator, that teacher's site administrator, and if it is approved, the teacher will then send a notification to the student's parents that a yellow novel will be used in the classroom, but they'll also have an alternate novel ready. Parents get that, they sign permission for their student, or they opt for the alternate novel. Takes about four weeks for this to happen. So with that, here's the list of novels that we went through this year. We're starting with our green novels. We had some graphic novels this year that we, that the committee is recommending, and a graphic novel, it's, it's use, uses both text and images in it. This is our list of yellow novels. And then finally, we did have a couple of red novels.
So what we will come before you to request is approval of Vizzle, the, published by Rethink Ed, Rethink Autism, to support special education students. I should say, students in special education. And iXL, grades K-six for math and, and ELA, published by iXL Learning Company. We'd request that we have the ability to redistribute the books that we historically have used for our units of study to be used as read-alouds and a supplemental for social studies, and also the novels that we have reviewed from the secondary novel review committee. And with that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Sinowski.
Thank you, President, Dr. Hartwells. Dr. Dodd's, you had mentioned that if we approved Vizzle tonight, it would not be initiated till January. Why would there be that delay?
Board member Sinowski, members of the board, special education has the approved use of TeachTown as a supplemental material, so we would continue out with TeachTown and then add in Vizzle next year.
Thank you, Dr. Dodd's.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Carney.
Thank you. Just a few questions. Okay, that was my question. I was looking at the special ed, and there's no red line. It's getting late, so I'm sorry, I may not have heard that correctly. But I thought you said that's redlined TeachTown, but it's not.
TeachTown would become redlined in January.
Okay.
So right now, they will continue out their contract of TeachTown that is already an approved supplemental, and then we would move to Vizzle in January.
Okay. And then can you talk about how you put on the, the website that parents can come and review that content? Can you talk about?
Sure. And so on our website, for the public, I was going to click back, all of our materials be on display for a supplemental, be on display during a curriculum adoption, or just in general, the community is invited to come to the Mojave District Annex and review any of our materials. We have a form on our website that we ask people to complete, or for them to, clearly doing something wrong, or we ask them to call our office to schedule an appointment. And the reason we do that is so that we can get the materials ready for them. Or if there is a login that we need to have prepared, then we will have that login prepared for them. So we have in our district office, the majority of all of our materials, some are housed at the warehouse, so we might have to get a delivery from the warehouse for a material. But families are, are able to submit a request to review an instructional material or call our office for an appointment. During the summer, we work Monday through Thursday, so are, they are able to come to our office Monday through Thursday. They're welcome to schedule an appointment outside of our typical hours of 7:30 to 4:00. But beginning in July, when we are back to five days a week, July through May, Monday through Friday, at Mojave District Annex.
Okay. Couple more questions. Does the, the supplemental materials list, does it include all the supplemental educational resources from the SAVE contract? The award vendors, that we have a list from all the, those vendors? Is that still going? Is that still?
There may be some. We'd have, if there were a product, we could cross-reference it. So if it's something on a SAVE contract, it might be an awarded vendor that another district has procured that we could tap into, but it might not be something that as our district, we are utilizing. So if you wanted to, you know, send me some questions about those specific items, we can certainly look those up.
Okay, so everything that is approved and adopted is on that list? There's nothing?
To the best of our knowledge, yes.
Okay. What about something like the crash course videos that we had conversations about last year, being approved by the website approval committee? What happens to those things that are approved by the website approval committee? Do those go onto this list, or?
Wonderful question. Crash course video, for example, through website approval, that would be considered an ancillary.
Okay.
An ancillary is a little bit different than a supplemental. In a, in one way, it has the same type of role. It enhances, or is it an additional resource for a unit of study? Except, it's not something that as a district, we are purchasing or are bringing before you as a governing board. So I think about, you know, when I was a teacher, if I was teaching about fairy tales, let's say, I might have the stories in my reader, but I might want to do a play. And maybe I bought the play at Lakeshore Learning Store. That would be an ancillary that I would be bringing into my classroom so that my students could have another dose of a fairy tale.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, very good. Thank you, Dr. Dodd's Karen. I move to approve Action Item 8F, the Approval of Supplemental Materials and Secondary Novels for 2024-25 School Year. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sinowski, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much, ladies. All right, moving on to the second read and approval, Governing Board Policy CBI Regarding the Evaluation of Superintendent. And I believe this, again, second read, so Mr. Bozen, are you just here to answer any follow-up questions? Are there any? Ms. Carney.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I guess I will say, I know we had had some communication about this, and we, we discussed not needing to change this because I had already addressed this last year and told it was okay. But you did mention that the, the language may be changing into saying the annual evaluation will be completed no later than June 30th of each year. And removing the confusing schedule by language might be a better option, but yet it, it didn't change. So I'm just wondering why you decided not to, to go with the annual evaluation will be completed no later than June 30th, language?
Just an oversight. I would suggest making that motion now, and I'd be fine with that amendment.
Okay, and then I had one more thing. Because I had asked that language be added to Policy CBI. I had emailed that if a taxpayer-funded tool is used to evaluate the superintendent, that each board member shall receive the feedback results no later than the board meeting prior to the scheduled evaluation. But I received no response to that, and then I don't see that language added here.
I apologize, Board Member Carney. I did not see that email, or at least I don't remember it today, and I think I would have noted that.
Well, that was, that was sent a long time ago. I mean, between the first read and now, so.
Ms. Carney, did you send it to Mr. Bozen only, or was it shared with any?
Dr. Menzel.
Dr. Menzel. Okay, I haven't seen that language, so. On the first point, just to clarify, because it sounded like that might be something you'd like to add. Can you?
No, it's okay.
Articulate, okay.
It's okay, I just was saying, I think that would have been better language, but.
So for the, for the first one, it's in, I have it up here. The board president shall schedule a meeting not later than June 30th. Instead, the board president shall schedule and conduct a meeting not later than June 30th. Does that be a sufficient change?
The language that you had said was just, maybe we could use the annual evaluation will be completed no later than June 30th of each year. But I'm not for the change anyway, so it doesn't.
You won't be approving your own amendment? Okay.
Well, I mean, because I had asked for additional language, but.
We can always bring it, that back without additional language. I, I did not see the email, but happy to bring it back at another time, if we want to table this.
Is there a motion to do so?
Okay, I moved to table Item 8G, CBI, so we can get the correct language that I just discussed, with saying the annual evaluation will be completed no later than June 30th of each year, which removes the confusing schedule by language, and adding the language that if a taxpayer-funded tool is used to evaluate the superintendent, each board member shall receive the feedback results no later than the board meeting prior to the scheduled evaluation.
I'll second. I, I don't, I'm sorry. Was that a motion?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, hang on. Wait, we still have, I have a question to clear.
So do I.
Actually. What do you mean by board member shall get the results? You seem, is there something specific you're thinking of that you think that this?
This year, we've been told.
Language needs to be added?
Last year, as my first year on the board, we received a printed copy of the superintendent's 360 feedback was given to us here at a board meeting. And this year, we have been told we cannot have that. We have to make an appointment to come in and see it. And I just don't, don't agree with that. It should be easier. So while we're amending this policy.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. That was my question. I think, Ms. Warner, I saw your light, and then Ms. Sinowski.
I just seconded her motion.
Okay, so you have seconded. And I'm going to ask you to repeat your motion once we get done with comments here, okay? Ms. Sinowski.
Can you please verify, Mr. Bozen, that there was actually action taken on the recommended language additions? If, because if we're going to be putting this into policy, I have to assume there was some conversation about adding that language that Ms. Carney mentioned. I don't recall that language. Was something that we all agreed to put between first read and second read.
Are you talking about the first sentence here?
No, what Ms. Carney was referring to with the.
That's the part that I did not see in an email. I, I have seen other emails discussing the 360 feedback in that request, but not for, to add this to CBI, but I may have just overlooked it, and I.
I must have too, then.
You didn't see it, because it was to Dr. Menzel and Mr. Bozen asking. Does Dr. Menzel remember this communication?
But wouldn't it be proper protocol to have that discussion with the entire board?
I think an amendment should have been sent, yeah.
So we could table. So we could table, but there is a motion on the floor at the moment. Sorry, Ms. Sinowski, I know you're not done.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Carney, can you repeat your motion? That was seconded by Ms. Warner, and then we will.
Well, I can simplify it. I was just trying to say, you know, in public, what I had requested. So I would like to table CBI so we can get on the.
The motion was to amend it.
Motion, yeah. Right. So you want me to read it all again? Okay, I would like to table CBI. I'm sorry. It's getting late. I'm sorry. I make a motion to change the language of Policy CBI, changing it to say the annual evaluation will be completed no later than June 30th of each year, and add language saying if a taxpayer-funded tool is used to evaluate the superintendent, each board member shall receive the feedback results no later than the board meeting prior to the scheduled evaluation.
Thank you for, thank you for repeating that. Ms. Carney, Ms. Warner did second, so we do have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. That motion fails. I would like to make a motion to table this item so that the full board can consider an amended in writing red line that maybe Mr. Bozen could provide before the next board meeting. Is there a second to the tabling?
Second to that motion to table.
All those in favor of tabling the item, please say aye.
Aye.
And those, aye. Those opposed to tabling, please say nay.
No.
Abstain? I'm sorry, I didn't hear Ms. Warner's vote. You said yes. Okay, thank you. That motion passes three to one. We will bring that item back once we have in writing the proposed revision from this evening and the full board present. Thank you. Moving to 8H, Second Read and Approval, Governing Board Policy KJA Regarding Relations with Booster Organizations. Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, Board President Hartwells. A board memo was provided to the board on April 22nd, 2024. That memo outlined the legal issues that provoked the need to have a board policy, governing booster clubs, and subsequent regulation. I, I just wanted the board to know that on Wednesday, May 1st, I presented the district's idea for a board policy to the Scottsdale Parent Council upon their request. There were two groups of about fifteen, thirty total, parents that wanted to make sure they understood our proposal and how they could help. On Thursday, May 2nd, an attendee provided me with a long list of items of how she thought the regulation should be developed, and suggestions about the previous regulation, which I had showed this board in April. The administration hopes to continue this work with parents and booster clubs to ensure the regulation is workable. One item that the parents requested was guidance on how to create a booster club and how to organize a 501(c)(3). Currently, there is one document on Scottsdale Unified's website about how to create a booster club, but it really does need to be improved to assist the booster clubs and new booster club members specifically. This week, and this is a final reason to adopt this policy, it's an exemplary of other comments that I've received. This week, I received a question about donations to athletic programs and a question about donations to schools to hire coaches. I was able to work with Athletic Director Nathan Slater to assist the parent and booster club member on those two issues. But it ultimately would require the governing board, I think, to take some action here to, to create a policy to assist the district in oversight for the legal issues that I mentioned in my board memo. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Warner.
Can you clarify your last comment when a parent approached you about paying for a coach through booster funds and what that would look like? And then I have a follow-up question to the current policy in front of us.
The parent asked if they could use their booster club funds just to pay a strength and conditioning coach directly. They said one of their head coaches had requested that, and our answer was no. That needs to go through community ed, and a supplement can create, be created. So that was a result of that. The, the main reason for that is the conflict of interest it creates with the coach that's being paid by a booster club and also by the district. Being, working for two separate entities at the same time becomes problematic and creates a conflict.
Okay. And if they were not working for the district, would it be different?
The booster club can hire people that aren't working for the district, sure.
Okay. So I have a couple of concerns. One is that this booster club is treated equally with a PTO, PTA, and while they, they are there to support the kids' organizations, fundraise, and so on, I've participated in them. They do operate a little bit differently when it comes to services and support for, say, a PTO, PTA, APT, for the classroom and for the school versus what a booster does for athletics and possibly what it does for fine arts. I don't, I'm not familiar with that piece of it. And I have another concern, because my conversation with the superintendent, my very first one-on-one meeting, he had a concern, and he did not support PTAs or APTs paying for aides because it was not equitable to other schools who are not able to do that. And so what I'd like to see in this is that the governing board either wants to develop the procedures as necessary for guidance. Just because I would not want to, yes, we need a policy, but I don't want that policy to hinder or impede our booster organizations in any way, because they are there to lift our kids up and to what's in the best interest of our kids and support them in every way that they can. So that is, that is a concern of mine, and you can comment on that.
Okay. Oh, thank you. That was part of the, you know, I was requested to go to the parent, Scottsdale Parents Council, but I was, it was illuminating for me because I got to hear about the issues that the boosters had questions about. And the other person that was there was somebody from the Arizona Corporation Commission trying to provide guidance. Corporation Commission trying to provide guidance to boosters so they don't get themselves in any sort of financial trouble. Booster, under the way this policy is articulated, would include parent-teacher organizations and any groups that are organizing for fine arts in addition to athletics. And so the, I don't know what Dr. Menzel's position was in that conversation you had, but boosters paying for aids is already something that, you know, is dealt with in policy. But I agree with you that the board should have oversight of this regulation as it's adapted, as the board always does when the board has the opportunity to review regulations. The meetings that I had with the Scottsdale Parent Council and with some of the people that have helped out already are helping to create the regulation that will be workable. So definitely think the board has a, a role in that, in the oversight of it.
I will give recognition to the, the parents that wanted to have some direction in how to do things. I think sharing best practices is all campuses is always very helpful and fundraising tips and things like that. That wouldn't necessarily be in policy, but maybe in the manual created. But again, I think the, the board needs to create that as opposed to the superintendent. So I'd like to see that changed if that's possible.
So to, to clarify, this is a second read, and you are asking for an amendment to the third paragraph?
Yes.
So that the board develops procedures and regulations? How does that fit into the board's responsibilities? It's not an executive function, it's not a legislative function, and it's not a appraisal function.
That is why I brought it to Mr. Bozen's attention, to how we can make that work.
That doesn't, that's.
I thought the first.
That's not a policy matter, other than a change to insert the board at a operational level where it is not to operate. That's what, that's my view.
Yep.
Not a comment on whether these procedures are good or bad, just that is not the lane that a governing board per policy is in, correct? There's always an ability to ask about the regulation, to bring it forward.
We're required to provide that to the governing board. Once it's drafted, we share it with governing board, so any questions can be asked and answered, but it is the administrative function to develop the regulations to implement governing board policy, per policy.
And, and that's what I was speaking to earlier. The superintendent would not be able to develop a procedure that was inconsistent with anything that was in policy. This would have to do with the other K policies that have to do with gifting, renting of facilities, hiring practices, conflict of interest, all the other policies, they all come together. The majority of the policies are delegating to the superintendent the ability to create procedures, but have that review function, which by practice, we've always, since I've been here, have included a, a regulation and not posted until we've gotten feedback from the board to make sure that it's workable. Obviously, you could create a board committee or something like that to create a regulation. I think that would have to be on a separate agenda. As far as amending this is concerned, and, and to have the board do that would be unique for the policy manual and very time-consuming, and also would, I guess, risk putting the board in the situation of almost being employees, which you can't be an employee. But there could be an amendment to this process, as I guess I've spoken enough to that.
Okay, let's just, going to get to the chase here. If, I do not support that amendment. There is no motion on the table yet. I'm going to make a motion to approve, this, this is a second read, so there have been opportunities for this to be discussed previously. I'm going to make a motion to approve the second read and approval of the governing board policy KJA regarding relations with booster organizations, which is a copyright policy, so this is a compliance policy. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. Is there, let's go ahead and vote on that. Is there another motion that you'd like to make, Ms. Warner, in light of your comments?
No.
No? Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
No.
That motion fails 2-2. And given there is urgency, I also spoke to a president of a boosters club last week asking where this was. So there is a need in the community to do this, there's a need in our schools to do this, so we will bring this back. All right, we have tabled Item 8I. We're moving on to governing board reports. Given the hour and the fact that our public comment period, time limit is two minutes for members of the public, I'd ask that each board member who gives a report this afternoon or this evening, tonight, out of respect, limit your board report to two minutes, please. Are there any board members with reports? No? All right. We'll move on to future items. To any board members, if you do wish to make a top, propose a topic for a future consideration, I do want to remind you that pursuant to policy BEDBA, you must notify the superintendent in writing as a follow-up to your request for a future item, although I do jot them down and keep a spreadsheet of what you've asked. I'm going to start. I have two future item requests. The Mojave Middle School Extension of the Math Science Academy would like a presentation on its own merits at some point when it's ready. And I also, and four months from now, I would like to see an updated transportation proposal as a consequence of our amended approval of Action Item 8B. Are there other future item requests by any board members? Ms. Carney?
Thank you. I have two future agenda items. First, I would like an investigation of the hiring process for the district athletic director position. I requested some items in an email on June 9th from Dr. Menzel regarding that. And then my second is I am requesting an audit of the procurement department and a comprehensive review on all contracts in 2023 and '24, ensuring that we've met policy law, the procurement rule, starting with special ed contracts, as I spent hours reviewing those before last meeting and this meeting. And in my limited review, I saw that the board has not approved money spent on Ridge Zeller contract for $419,885, or Behavior RX, $450,642, as well as Therapy Travelers, which is now Epic, Orange Tree Staffing, and AZ Staffing.
This isn't, I, okay, I appreciate that.
I'm done.
Okay. Since we're not, we're agendized for specifics here, but I have a jot down. Thank you.
So you understand why I'm asking for that?
I appreciate that. Would you consider bringing it forward as a future item as a potential audit topic for the audit committee? This seems like.
Possibly, we can discuss that.
Something beyond the scope of a presentation to the board.
Oh, yeah, it's not a presentation. It needs to be something prior for the audit, outside auditor.
So would you like to, would you like to just, would you consider revising your request to bring forward consideration by the board to refer this topic to the audit committee? Because we would have to vote to do that.
Okay.
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 Okay, that seems like an appropriate venue for that task. Are there other future item requests? Very good. I have none either. All right, we are moving on here to the dates of the upcoming meetings. Just two things to point out, you can read the rest yourself here. Tuesday, June 25th, our next board meeting is a special meeting at the Mojave District Annex. It will be at 6:00 PM. The current time listed on the governing board webpage says 5:00 PM. Ms. Wagner is taking the action to update the webpage, but just to not be confused, it will be 6:00 PM on June 25th at the MDA. And then just as note, we do not have governing board meetings the month of July. Can enjoy your summers, and we'll be back at it in August. All right. I would have a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 4-0. We are adjourned, and the time is 11:27.